Welcome to tonight's regularly scheduled city council meeting. The meeting is called to order. I kindly ask our city clerk to please take the roll call.
Mike Bruno.
Here.
Tara Burkhardt.
Here.
Mike Clemens.
Here.
Becky Ruby.
Here.
Dean Kilburg.
Dean Kilburg, here.
Craig Maladra.
Here.
Richard Marks.
Here.
Jean McGowan.
Here.
Chair Muredekki.
Here.
Robert Swanson.
Here.
We have a full house tonight, folks. Alderman Kilburg is joining us via telephone, which is permitted under Illinois law. A council member who is either traveling on business or ill at home can participate in a council or committee of the whole meeting via telephone. When a vote is taken, or when a question is asked, we kindly ask Alderman Kilburg to state his name, make his point, and/or cast his ballot. Any objections to Alderman Kilburg participating via telephone this evening? Hearing none, seeing none. Welcome, Dean.
Thank you.
We begin our meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance. I'd like to ask a very distinguished guest, the Executive Director of the Court Appointed Special Advocates of Kane County, Gloria Kelly, to lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Gloria. Alderman Clemens, would you like to do the introductions of your friend Gloria? Or do you...I'll certainly recognize you to do so.
Sure. Well, I'd love to welcome Gloria to come up and speak and tell us all about CASA, and give us an update on the state of CASA. For those who don't know, they serve the needs of abused and neglected kids as advocates in court. It's a wonderful organization, one that I'm proud to be part of, and take it away, Gloria.
Thank you, Mike, and thank you. It's actually a wonderful pleasure. When Mike and I talked a couple of weeks ago, we had both noted that I hadn't spoke in front of the City of Geneva and the council for quite a while. And, believe it or not, I'm not here to even ask for money right now. Isn't that great, right? I'm actually here to say thank you for the support. As, you know, we've all heard the terminology, "It does take a village." And I feel like in this city and in the whole Kane County community, we have just seen such an outpouring of gratitude, generosity, and what we kind of refer to as donate, connect, and volunteer. And in our world, it's everybody can do something. So, as many of you, and I always like to go around, I'm sure all of you know about CASA a little bit, right? At least enough to make you dangerous. And so, I have been and have had the unique privilege of being the Executive Director going on my 11th year. My last name used to be Bunce, and now it's Kelly. And so, with that, I've been, I've actually moved into the tri-city area. And 11 years ago, when I started, we're a much different organization. And I will even go back to the history. This year, we're actually celebrating our 30 years of child advocacy. So, I'm really, we're really proud of that. And, you know, it didn't just start, you know, our organization started with a woman by the name of Charlotte Evans, for many of you who knew her. And she was a very vivacious, I was able to actually meet her before she actually passed. And I could just tell by the first time I met her, with her energy, and she brought this movement back from California. Well, and then she brought it back to a family that many of you know, the Hunt family. And recently, and unfortunately, we lost Doris back in April, who has been like our matriarch of the organization, and very missed. So, you know, it was with that collective group of individuals who really had a, like a vision and a passion to take it. And you're going back even in the 1970s, there was a judge named David Sukup, which is, by the way, from this area, and many of you might even know him. And so, you look at the trajectory of like one person being able to really truly make a significant difference in the lives of children, because at the end of his court call, he couldn't sleep at night. He knew there was so much more needing to be done in the lives of foster care. So, one man's vision now created 1,000 programs nationwide, 1,000. And I will share with you, in Kane County, we are the largest CASA program in the state of Illinois today, even over Cook County and Lake County. And so, people are like, "How is that possible?" It can't be, because of population. But in the state of Illinois, up until recently, we received even, it was called the VOCA grant, which is still only 20% of our budget. 80% of our funds still come from private donations. So, last year, we served 607 children. And last year was our highest, a third coming from probate only. So, probate, and then two-thirds came from abuse and neglect. It was one of the lowest abuse and neglect years versus probate that we had seen. So, question is, why is that? It really comes down to the state and the Department of Child and Family Services. We all understand and know the last couple of years has been pretty rough, the state of Illinois and the budgets, things not passing. So, they had a different perspective in trying to get kids and family through more of the private guardianship cases, and that's what came through. So, when I look at just even my 11 years of being here, and then the 30 years of when we really formed, the great thing is that, yes, we're serving 100% of all abused and neglected children. We went from 11 years ago having eight part-time staff members to 19 now full-time staff members. And in having over 225 CASA GL volunteers, that you would think they're all employees. And I love, we love that. And Mike is one of them, because they take that volunteer role so very seriously. So, the organization recently, a couple of years ago, went through a feasibility study, and we noticed some things that we really needed to change. And to really make our program the accredited and high-level standard organization that we wanted and needed to be, that's when we started bringing some of the more people involved. So, today, we're about, and this is within Kind and through what the county also provides us with our rent, we're about a $3.5 million organization. But again, you know, I, the glue is my staff, and I need to make sure that they're well taken care of, they're dealing with what society issues and people don't want to deal with. The trauma of dealing with abused and neglected children is pretty tough at the end of the day. And being able to supervise, case manage, train, qualify, because everybody thinks that you, "Oh, I'll just be a CASA GL volunteer," but there's so much more involved with it. So, we're starting to work more strategically, and really making sure that the commitment, that's what we pride ourselves on in the program, that the commitment that they make are something that they're going to stay with through the duration of this child's life. So, that's something that you here in this community can also be proud of. We, as you know, we take residents up at the Kane County courthouse. We occupy about two-thirds of the fourth floor now. And we did a massive expansion three years ago through space that wasn't being utilized. So, we got it approved by the county board and our chief judge at the time. And today, again, we're able to accommodate the space and the training area that was so needed for the CASA GLs. So, I guess in a nutshell, I don't want to take too much time up in being respectful, but I also would love to answer any questions and anything else about the CASA organization.
Questions from Mrs. Kelly, from anyone from the dais? Alderman Bruno.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for your work. CASA's a fabulous organization, and as you alluded, you see children that are in the worst of situations oftentimes. But if there are people that are looking to get involved or just learn more about CASA, what is your website that they can visit?
Thank you. It's casakane county.org. And right now, we are doing a huge recruitment right now. We're trying to, we're looking, we're actually starting in October to train 35 to 40 new CASA GL volunteers. In the last three to four weeks, I've seen more of an influx on abuse and neglect cases than we have seen the last nine months to, nine to 12 months. And so, we're actually, it's kind of like what I call the fire hose mode. We're like, okay, recruitment, you know, qualifying, there's a lot to that, which a lot of people don't realize. It's not, we always say, "It's not your ordinary, but your extraordinary volunteer role." And we just need to make sure that we're, is being proactive. The only other thing I would say, two things, for so long, we've always been that reactive organization. And what we're doing is we're working with Child Prevention Centers of America, and we're being more proactive in our education. We're working with the State's Attorney's Office, Joe McMahon, and his office in the Department of Child and Family Services, to really, you know, initiate that mandated reporting initiative. If you see something, say something. No more of like, "Maybe I didn't see that." But you know what? Our philosophy is that every child deserves the right of that phone call, like, and do not hesitate if you feel it, I swear, go with the gut. And one more other thing that we wanted to do on a marketing level is that we haven't had the Governor's Hometown Awards since 2001, so we're going to give it a shot again. And hopefully, after 30 years of child advocacy, we have a good opportunity for that. Yeah.
Anyone else from the dais? Alderman Clemens?
Just want to just point out and just say, it amazed me, as a volunteer, you go through all this training, and it's very intense, and the importance of the role is more than I think people would realize when they step into it. I was shocked at how the judge would take into account what the CASA says. In fact, it was, in my experience, from the three cases I was on, was that the judge always went with CASA's recommendation. So, I never actually even saw a case where they went against CASA's input. And I was just surprised by that.
99%. And over 30 years, one other thing that, and Mike just learned this as well, is we just were able to hire our, first time, our own CASA GL attorney, for the first time in 30 years. So, we're working with pro bono attorneys and probate. And again, what we call our triage, we need to work together more collaboratively in solving problems, providing kids the media resources. And Mike's been a huge advocate on that. He knows that, you know, DCFS is supposed to provide certain allowances, but sometimes with the bureaucracy that we see, that's what CASA's doing a little bit differently. So, it really makes us proud, and we want to be able to support our CASA GLs. That's why we exist. We want to be able to support them to support our kids in need. And together, we're doing that. So, thank you, Mike. Thank you for everything.
Alderman Kilburg, any questions or comments from Mrs. Kelly?
No, CASA does great work. I appreciate all the...
Fair to say, Mrs. Kelly, that there's not any community in Kane County that is exempt from the challenges with respect to the kids?
Fair enough, yeah.
Fair enough. Alderman McGowan?
Thank you. Hi, Gloria, thanks for your presentation. You're a dynamo for CASA, and your work is truly appreciated, as well as the work of all the volunteers, including Alderman Clemens here. Can you tell us a little bit about the clothing closet that CASA has?
Oh, sure.
I'd like to know more about it.
Yeah, absolutely.
And tell others. Thank you.
So, when you asked about like what, when I started the presentation about everybody can do a little something, is the commitment of the CASA GL is the largest. But what we started 2011 is an initiative where we're gifting gas cards, clothes drives for kids in need, suitcases, so that every child that comes into care receives a baby bag, duffel bag, or large suitcase. And that has been a really big initiative. And we say that that happens 365 days a year. So, regard, and I saw Boy Scout in here, right? A lot of the Boy Scouts and the Girl Scouts, they love taking on those initiative projects. You know, it really helps rally the community and helps our kids get to a whole new level of need that, again, is more instant. We have a little CASA store in our basement now that provides all of that. And with our CASA University, which will be launched in three more weeks, it'll be, everything will be there in need, and from resources, partnerships that we have within the community, because we do cover all of Kane County.
So, all of that will be, is all of that information
On the website.
available on the CASA Kane County website?
Absolutely, absolutely.
Okay. As well as, does it detail like what people can donate, or what donations are currently needed, and all of that?
Yes.
Okay.
It does. And if you're not getting that, just give me a call, my number's on there.
Okay, wonderful. Thanks so much.
Oh, thank you.
Anyone else from the dais? Or from the audience, from Mrs. Kelly? Well, it's obvious, we not only honor what you do, but we appreciate what you do. And it's always a pleasure to have you here at City Hall, so thank you, Gloria.
Thanks, Mayor Burns. Appreciate it. And thank you for your time. Thanks for all you guys do. [applause]
Item four, ladies and gentlemen, amendments to the agenda. Are there any amendments this evening? All of you should have a, an agenda that was revised just recently. There was a, an error made in one of the items that was considered to be consent, but it's not, so the agenda before you is the correct agenda. Item five is the omnibus agenda. All items marked with an asterisk are considered to be routine by this council, and can be considered and voted upon with one motion. Is there such a motion? So moved. Alderman Bruno makes the motion on the consent agenda. Is there a second? Seconded by Alderman McGowan. Any questions or comments regarding the consent matters? Mr. Kilburg, any questions or comments regarding the consent items?
No questions.
Alderman...my God, I almost demoted you, I'm sorry. Mr. Clerk, would you like to take the roll call?
No comment. Mike Bruno.
Aye.
Tara Burkhardt.
Aye.
Mike Clemens.
Aye.
Becky Ruby.
Aye.
Dean Kilburg.
Kilburg, aye.
Craig Maladra.
Aye.
Richard Marks.
Aye.
Jean McGowan.
Aye.
Chair Muredekki.
Aye.
Robert Swanson.
Aye.
Item five passes unanimously with 10 affirmative votes, zero nay votes, and zero abstentions. We skip down to item number 10, municipal bills for payment. We kindly ask our city clerk to please read the bills in their aggregate for our consideration.
Total bills for payment, $3,129,087.49.
Mayor, I move that we approve and pay the bills as read. The individual items that add up to that amount can be found in tonight's packet on the city website.
Alderman Bruno makes the motion to pay the bills as presented, which are available on our, or in our packets and on the city's website. Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Seconded by Alderman Clemens. Any questions or comments from the dais, or Alderman Kilburg from the Twin Cities?
Nothing here.
Seeing none here, Mr. Clerk, please take the roll.
Mike Bruno.
Aye.
Tara Burkhardt.
Aye.
Mike Clemens.
Aye.
Becky Ruby.
Aye.
Dean Kilburg.
Kilburg, aye.
Craig Maladra.
Aye.
Richard Marks.
Aye.
Jean McGowan.
Aye.
Chair Muredekki.
Aye.
Robert Swanson.
Aye.
Item 10 passes unanimously with 10 affirmative votes, zero nay votes, and zero abstentions. Committee of the whole, items of business are under item 11, 11A, is to recommend ordinance number 2018-20, amending Title VI police regulations, Chapter 1, animal control, Section 8, prohibited animals X and conditions, subsection F, animals in public buildings and stores of the City of Geneva code. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Alderman Bruno? Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Alderman McGowan. This matter is open for discussion. From the dais, any comments or questions regarding the considered action this evening? Alderman Kilburg, any questions or comments?
Nothing at this time.
If the council does not object, I'll entertain questions or comments from the audience. Anyone in the audience wishing to comment on this item, 11A? Yes, sir. Welcome back.
Hello, everybody, again. My name is Michael Tennis. This talking in front of people doesn't get easier as it goes, I don't know what it is.
You're doing great.
Um, I'm kind of passionate about this, because my wife has really severe allergies to pets. So, I've been saying from the beginning, I don't understand why it can't be just an amendment to let businesses like Wet Nose allow pets in. I don't understand why it's got to be gutted to the point where it's the business's decision, because I think the ordinance has been fine. I mean, I know I keep hearing that we're not following it anyways. Well, I don't think people are aware of it. I certainly wasn't aware until all of a sudden, one day on Facebook, it pops up, because Ms. Spitzer, I think, made a post, and my wife pointed it out to me. And so, I'm not, I know, this probably sounds wrong, I'm not a complaining guy. So, when I go to a store and if I seen a pet, I would just assume it can be there. It just never occurred to me that it couldn't. But a couple of things that do concern me, because it sure looks like this is going to happen, is I really think it should be on the onus of the businesses that want to allow pets, to give some indication to people coming in, that you could run into animals in there. And a big part of that now is after asking the city attorney last week, which was a different gentleman, if the business owners' pets had to be on a leash, and he said no, he didn't believe they did, he said he was going to find out the answer for sure for me. He's not here today. I read the code, I think he's correct. I don't think business owners have to keep their leashes on, or their pets on a leash. And then, that leads me to believe that if, I'm assuming that's kind of like, since they own the property, or own the business, or whatever, they're looking at it like an ownership of a home, or something to that degree. And if that's the case, and I know this is just a little bit of a stretch here, but they could have four pets, according to the code, at a residence. So, I don't know why they couldn't have four pets unleashed in their business. So, that's why, if this does get to the point where you're leaving it up to the businesses, which, like I said, I don't feel is necessary, but I really think you would be helping the public quite a bit by enforcing some sort of signage, or something that's clear, for the businesses that are going to allow pets to post it. And I'm not talking about the ones that are not, because I think if they don't want to do anything, they shouldn't have to. Because if you want to allow pets, it's kind of, this is kind of like what you're, to me, it's what you're getting. If you want to allow pets, all you got to do is this, put the sign on the door if this goes through. If it doesn't, well, you know, you know how I feel about that, so. But, and like I said, by all means, I think the pet stores should allow pets, whether they are groomers or not. If they sell products for pets, and that's their base business, by all means, let them in, let the pets go in there. Because a guy with allergies, or a guy with a wife with allergies is not going in there. I can't see any scenario I'd go in there. But nonetheless, I got nothing against them type of businesses or the situation. And ultimately, I am just trying to protect my family. That's all I'm trying to do here. So, if I came off like a pain, I'm sorry.
Not at all, sir. In fact, we're glad that you're here.
Okay.
No one who ever attends here is a pain. They have every right to speak their mind, and I believe, and I believe the council would echo this. You've spoken eloquently and respectfully, and you're more than welcome to join us anytime regarding any issue, so.
Okay, well, I...
Don't think otherwise, please.
Well, I, thank you. I do have one other question, though.
Oh, God.
And it didn't, it didn't occur to me until you said I could talk. And I don't know if I can ask this in this general way, and maybe get responses or not?
Yes, sir. Well, depending on what the question...
The question, it's a simple question. You want to leave this up to the business owners to decide. Besides the handful of business owners that showed up in this room, how many business owners have you guys heard from that are interested in making this decision for themselves? That's my question. Has it been strong input from businesses? I think it was, Mr. Rudekki had said there's, whatever, 800 businesses in this town, and we're about ready to make a big wholesale change. And from what I see now, I don't got the input you guys have. And I'm not, I would never say you're not getting what you're saying as far as input. But the only input I'm getting is what I'm seeing in this room, and it's very, very small, compared to 800 and some businesses, or 1,000 businesses. I know the restaurants and whatever, places like that don't count. But I'm just curious, are you guys getting a lot of input from business owners to make this change?
I certainly am, sir, and I'll certainly allow the council to respond as they see fit. The reality that I've experienced is almost echoing your opening statement. There was a great sense of unaware, a great, is that even grammatically correct, you?
Unawareness.
Unawareness that the ordinance existed.
Right.
Once it was brought to the surface that it did exist, the communications I received, both telephone and email, from business owners who believed that it should be up to them was significant.
Okay.
Well in excess of 30, well, actually, it was 31 businesses.
Number one.
Number two, they cited to me 14 businesses in the downtown alone that do have their pets in their stores.
Okay.
Do allow other pets to come in. And, quite frankly, stated rather convincingly that you've never enforced the ordinance, why not allow then those business owners and/or property owners, through their cooperation, to do what they wish? That's what I've heard.
Okay.
I have heard from a handful of folks who have said, "Please don't change." I think all the council probably has received, like I have, approximately 162 or so emails from folks throughout the area, which is great. Some of the comments have been a little bit waylaid, but most have been supportive of rescinding the ordinance that prohibits it outright.
Okay.
By all means, anyone on the council wishing to speak and do so, obviously. Alderman Bruno?
I would only concur with what you said.
Alderman Ruby?
I agree strongly with what you've said. I think that the regulation gets hairy. I would like it if the businesses that would allow pets would, we talked about this a little bit, just voluntarily post something in their window, and just hope that people would do that without getting real sticky with regulation.
Okay, thank you.
Alderman Clemens, then Alderman Rudekki?
Well, we already spoke on the phone some, so you, I answered some of your questions, I think. And I kind of would like to echo Alderman Ruby's comments. I would like to see some sort of sticker or something as well. I think that's a reasonable thing to ask for. It does get tricky with the regulations. It becomes a regulation. I wish we could find a way to make that, make it work somehow, in organic movement. There would be a volunteer program or something, or we could get stickers. But, yeah, that's where I'm standing right now in this.
Okay, thank you.
Alderman Rudekki, then I'll ask Alderman Kilburg if he has any questions or comments.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, well spoken, well said, thank you for all of your input.
You're welcome.
And I think you do make a good point. I mean, you know, we were all deluged with a lot of responses, they were solicited responses. You could tell by the way that they came in. And that's fine, and that counts. But when Alderman Burkhardt puts something up on Facebook, and it's about a 50/50, or whatever the number is, I mean, there are a lot of people that do, that are not as passionate, that don't come out here, will not participate in. And I know this is not a popularity contest, but it is a barometer for us to judge with, you know, but we, we're the voice of the community. So, I think that puts a lot of weight with it. I am all forgiving choice to the owners, but I also think that there does need to be some notification. Like everybody else, I don't want to over-regulate this thing, I don't want to create more bureaucracy. I mean, we all want to do this in the simplest form and fashion, but I think simply removing this is not the right thing to do at this time. And oddly enough, you know, the allergy thing, you know, everyone says, "Well, you know, there's peanut allergies, and there's all these trees and everything else." Over the last weekend, we were invited to a family reunion, and they said, "Pets are friendly, pets are welcome." We were the only ones that brought our English Bulldog. I never bring this dog anywhere, okay? We got stuck, we couldn't have anybody watch it. And one of, a little girl at the reunion had to go to the emergency room, because she swallowed up so badly from an allergic reaction to the dog. I felt terrible about it, you know? So, you know, that's a real deal. That's a, that's a real thing. And, you know, to say, "Well, you know, there's a ton of other allergies," doesn't mean that we should just write that off and not be cognizant of what the potential that this can cause. So, again, I'm not for delaying this thing, you know, my adage still stands that when, Rule 1, when horse dies, dismount. But, you know, I just can't pass this, I'm not in support of what, just simply removing it. I also still think, and I know it is the business owner's right to make that refusal, but I still think that there should be something remaining in an ordinance that's been around for 45 years, that an owner that does not want to, or a landlord, have pets in their stores can point to an ordinance that gives them that right and that ability to do that, not just them saying they don't want one in their business. So, you know, I'm all for achieving, I think, the end result that everybody else is here. I would, I would prefer not to drag the matter out, but just as it's proposed to simply remove it, I just can't do it right now, I wish I could. So with that, I'd be happy to hear any other members of the council what their feedback is. So, thank you for the opportunity to speak to it.
Thank you. Alderman Kilburg?
I really don't have anything other than to add, that I still think it'd be beneficial to have some type of a uniform sticker indicating the store's pet-friendly, and maybe the Chamber of Commerce could pick up on that, or maybe some of the pet stores would be prepared to donate a decal, and that they could be distributed through the Chamber of Commerce, any business that would want to, to alert the public that they are pet-friendly. I think that, you know, with the changes that we're enacting here, I think some clarity, or some type of a message to the, to the visitors to Geneva that visit our businesses, I think that'd be helpful. It's really unrelated to what we're talking about here.
From the dais, anyone who has not yet spoken, or wishes to speak? Otherwise, I'll recognize someone else. Alderman Burkhardt?
Yeah, I can't, I can't say much new beyond what everyone said. We all seem to be struggling, but we don't seem to find a solution. I am a no vote on this as it is structured now, because I agree that there should be some kind of notification for the family with severe allergies, frightened of a pet, that this is a pet-friendly store, and I wish we could figure out a way to do that. I, I mean, we could require it, I guess, you know, the question is, if you require it, what's the policing of it, right? Is a store has a dog in there, but they lets dogs in there, but they don't have the sticker? I guess that's the question. In terms of business owners, I only heard from a handful of downtown merchants who did want the decision up to themselves, and they seem to say they don't want to lose any business, they feel like, in this retail client, retail atmosphere, they can't risk the person walking by with their dog, who has to keep walking because they can't bring them in. But I do, I hope those business owners realize that they have the flip, too, which is, your family, you know, if you see a big dog in a store, you're going to keep walking because that just doesn't work for you, and, so, just to answer your question on that one.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you. Before I recognize Alderman Bruno, is anyone else who has not yet spoken who wishes to do so from the dais? Alderman Maladra?
So personally, I like the idea of stores wishing to allow pets, doing so by posting something. I don't care if it's a uniform sign, if it's green, yellow, blue, or purple, just as long as it's there. What I didn't think of until tonight is, without that, what is the person with allergies supposed to assume when they approach a place of business? That they're going to go in, and there's not going to be a reaction, a problem, or that there is. Geneva, by revoking this ordinance, is pretty much saying it can be either way. So you're looking at that shop door, and you just don't know. And so I think that that's a problem.
Alderman Bruno?
Thank you, Mayor. As I, as people with keen memory will remember, this wasn't my preferred method to address this issue. I would have preferred an amendment to address some of the issues here, but, to borrow from Alderman Rodecky, I think there's a lot of over-ophilizing on this particular issue. There's, there are a lot of non-compliant, non-conforming businesses that are pet-friendly now, as we've heard from, and there is no notification that those businesses have dogs. To the point of the survey, you know, Alderman Burkhardt and myself have talked about this, I've tried to set up a survey myself, but the limitations of the text that you can put into those Facebook surveys, it's hard to get, to ask a super-precise question, I don't know that that's, I don't know that I'd put a lot of stock in the results of that particular survey. I would like to see if we've got an easy-to-access database, just a letter, if this passes to remove it, just a letter to registered business on, businesses that this is being stricken.
We don't register businesses?
Yes, that's-
So, either through utility bill, perhaps, or, but we don't, we don't register all those businesses.
Thank you. I'm not for delaying this, I'm prepared to vote for what's in front of us, thanks.
Alderman McGowan, then Alderman Rodecky?
I have a question for you, Stephanie, related to what Alderman Bruno was just mentioning. Would it be possible, if we did vote this evening to, because we're, I'm calling it repeal, this ordinance, would the city be able to include something on an upcoming utility bill that goes out to all the business owners, saying, "We ask that you voluntarily post somewhere outside your door, informing people whether or not you're, you allow pets on the premises"? Would that be possible?
So, we, we have the capability of putting a message on the utility bill, but it goes to all utility holders. So that would be residential and commercial. But there's, there's a little message box that we can put any kind of message on, but we can certainly do stuff through economic development, through their list serves, and suggest that.
All right, and I mean, I think it wouldn't be, it wouldn't hurt to put something on the utility bill as well, a message just saying like, hey, everybody, you know, if this, if this is the case, like Geneva has become pet-friendly, pets are allowed in businesses, we ask that businesses voluntarily post outside their door, informing people as to whether or not their pets are allowed. You can always call ahead if you're not sure, and talk to someone there at the store and find out. And a question for Alderman Rodecky. I'm curious, because I have severe cat allergies. You shared the story of the little girl, and I'm very sorry to hear that she had to go to the ER, that's happened to me a few times. Was it a situation where she was playing with your dog, and letting it like lick her, and things like that? Like, did she get really close to it, or was she just literally in the same room?
Yeah, no, it was a younger girl, and she was closer to the dog, yeah. And she, her mom's a pediatrician, and was there, too, so. I mean, they're well aware of it, but, you know, it was unavoidable.
Because that happens to me, I can be in a room with a cat, and have very, very mild allergies. If there's no ventilation in the room, it'll affect me a little bit sooner, I'll just, I'll leave. But I can certainly tell right away if I'm having some allergy symptoms, and certainly if I were to touch a cat and rub my eye, or, you know, anything like that, it would, it would really be a bad situation. But I'm, I'm sure your wife, I'm guessing, is the same, like, if she's very allergic to dogs, she keeps her distance?
Yeah, as best she can. I mean, in a store, it might be a little more difficult, since, you know, things are enclosed, especially if it was like, and, you know, I, I don't know what stores would allow pets and which wouldn't, but if it was like a furniture store, or something that somebody sold furniture, or clothing store, or something, there may not have to be any cats or dogs on the property, and could be taken at home with us in our car, you know, for all we know, you know? If it's not posted outside that this place allows animals in there, we may not be aware.
And would your, would your wife still have allergy symptoms, just by being in a store with pets?
She has, she has had reactions by being next to people that have, particularly cats, but she is allergic to a lot of dogs as well. But she has, I've seen her have reactions, and just sitting next to somebody because their coat has, I guess, hair, I'm not an allergist. But it definitely could be an issue. I mean, we could take, in theory, take something home that's, you know, if we're not aware that this place is allowing animals.
I just feel that because Geneva has, I said earlier, because Geneva has already been living in a way that is very pet-friendly, we've already been allowing dogs into stores, most people were completely unaware of this ordinance banning pets. I just think the, the amount of times that you would encounter a pet in a store will pretty much remain the same. It's not like there have been no pets, we've already been living with pets in stores. So, as much as I sympathize with people with allergies, I'm one of them, I'm more willing to give shop owners the ability to choose for themselves whether or not to allow pets. And I had another thought, oh my goodness. I'm still in favor of striking this ordinance from our city code, and just, and I do like, like the idea very much of asking business owners to post, or directors of public buildings, to post something outside, so you can inform people, okay, there may be a dog here, or other pet. And I just remembered, you mentioned the possibility of a business owner having four dogs off-leash in their store. I, I do believe that's a bit of an exaggeration, and I can't really see that happening, because it's really hard to keep track of that many pets, and you'd worry that one of them would sneak out the door when someone came in, so. I highly, I know that's scientifically a possibility, but I highly doubt that would really happen.
It's a legal possibility, as far as I can tell, reading the code. And, to be honest, I mean, I run into things all the time now, I never thought I'd be talking about, or even considering. So, to say it's, I agree, it's probably not likely, but I think it's a possibility. And, you know, it's just what I surmise, reading through, and trying to, trying to do my best to make what I think could be fair for everybody. Unfortunately, I don't think asking people to voluntarily put up a sign is going to cut it. I really don't, I think it's going to have to be required if it's going to happen, because, and I actually, I, I don't see why a business that wanted to let pets in would not want to get a sign up there, if they're proud of that fact, let's, you know what I mean? But I think it should be something big and bold enough that's not difficult to see, and that way I can make a decision, you know? And I'm not, I'm not sitting here saying I'm not going to go to any store that doesn't, that allows pets, because I got to go to Home Depot, you know? I mean, it's, 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 there's no way, I can't not go to Home Depot, and I've seen pets in there. But there's, that's not a place where I think I'm going to buy something that's going to cause my wife a problem if I come back home with it, or something like that, that's just, you know, but, like I said, like a furniture store, or someplace that just sold, you know, an antique store that sold furniture, or something, or clothing, stuff like that. That stuff is what I'm really concerned about, and actually encountering a pet too close, that kind of thing. I just, I just think there, it's, I think we want it to be simple, I just don't think it is, so.
Thank you very much.
You're, you're, you're welcome.
Certainly want to invite anyone else to comment or question?
Thank you.
But thank you, sir, very, very much. Yes, welcome. All we ask is that you state your name, and-
Good evening, my name's Terri Barth, I'm a long-term customer of Wet Nose, and I really struggle with the length of time that we're spending discussing this. I do see both sides of it. I actually had a former boss who had severe allergies, and as a pet owner, when I came to work, yes, I'm going to have dog hair on me. Would I sit next to her in meetings? No, I would make sure that I'm in a different part of the room, so not to cause any allergic reactions for her. Walking the streets here in the city as people are shopping, people have their pets on a leash, someone who's that severely allergic is going to encounter a pet and have a reaction just as much as someone in a store. To me, it's just geography, you're taking outdoors, and you're penalizing the indoors, but there's really no difference. I think it's something where people didn't realize this ordinance existed, and it's been a past practice that people brought their, brought their pets into their stores, and I just really don't see that it's an issue. The committee meeting last Monday night passed at six to four votes, and quite honestly, I thought it was going to be an omnibus agenda item tonight, so, not quite sure why it's still open for discussion, but I do hope that we can resolve it this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Barth. And just for the record, Ms. Barth, an omnibus agenda item has to be voted on unanimously by the committee in order to be considered omnibus.
Thank you.
So that is why. Yes?
My name is Susan Kingsfield. I struggle with exactly the same things that, that we've been talking with. I think it's perfectly fine to, as you say, let the shop owners voluntarily put up any signage that they choose, if they choose. My concern is, if that's what you vote on tonight, then how are you going to police it? You can't police the people who stand right outside the door, smoking. And you go to go in a store, and I'm severely allergic to cigarette smoke, and I have to walk through a haze to get into a store. I mean, you don't police that, and so, you know, I'm just thinking that there's a whole big area of worms that we're opening up here by trying to impose all these little rules that aren't going to be policed anyway. So, I would love to see it just stricken, and let people grow up, put on their big-boy pants, and deal with life. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Rodecky?
I'm getting my big-boy pants on here right now. I'm wondering, you know, my fear is that this is going to fail or tire, and we don't want this to continue to go on, because I think it's a close, it was close to committee, I think it's going to be close today. Is it appropriate for me to offer an amendment and attempt to move this along, Mr. Mayor? And if the, if the amendment fails, then we go back to the original, is it-
Certainly up to any council member to offer an amendment that can do so, that amendment needs to be seconded, that amendment then is exclusively the topic of any discussion.
Okay. In an attempt to move this along, and to get, to bring some closure to this, and maybe some compromise to it, I would offer an amendment to, to what we currently are considering under this item, to include that pet supply stores are immediately exempt from the requirement, and need not post, and that any, any store that wishes to allow pets in their premises needs to indicate so on the outside of their premises in some way, shape, or form. Leave it up to them, how they do it. But require them to put some notice that it's a pet-friendly store, let them do it on their own, their own initiative. I don't want a requirement for licensing, registration, policing, all that, but I know this is nebulous, but in some way, shape, or form, I'm just trying to reach a middle ground for everybody here. So, to recap.
My notes indicate that the motion is to, pet stores shall be exempt from this ordinance?
Pet supply. Just as the other-
Pet supply stores.
Pet supply stores. And those stores and/or buildings wishing to allow pets must post signage on their building and/or doors indicating as much.
Correct.
More or less. Is there a second to that amendment? Alderman Maladra offers the second discussion. Discussion regarding the amendment only. Alderman McGowan?
Thank you. If we are amending the, the item on the agenda, which is just to do away with the ban, then why do we need to specify that dogs, or, sorry, that pet supply stores are not included? Isn't that kind of-
Well, the spirit of my amendment is to leave the ordinance intact, and to amend the ordinance, the original ordinance, to read that pet supply stores are also exempt along with the other three, and that, that shop owners, or store owners, or landlords have the ability to allow pets into their stores, but they must indicate to the public clearly that pets are allowed in their stores. But, Mr. Mayor, Alderman, so you're indicating that it's a voluntary exemption that's initiated by a property owner, by a business owner, whether to allow pets in the store? Correct. Correct.
But it, for lack of a better word, demanding that signage be present-
Right, with the caveat that it's contingent on them displaying some notification that pets are allowed, are welcoming their premises.
Alderman McGowan still has the floor.
I'm sorry.
That's all right, anything else?
I watched a video of myself, and I was saying umm too much the last time, so I've got to, got to strike that word for my vocabulary. Are we talking about, are we, have we reverted now to talking about what is the city code, the existing city code, and just amending that code?
That's correct.
So we're no longer talking about striking that code from our-
That's correct. The amendment offered by Alderman Rodecky and seconded by Alderman Maladra puts on the floor consideration of new language within the existing code.
Was there a motion to strike it in a second? Until that is voted out?
No, sir, the motion tonight, there is no motion, the motion, original motion on the floor was to approve the decision made at the committee of the whole meeting. That decision can be amended throughout the process of discussion, which was offered by Alderman Rodecky.
Is the final language of the amended code, as Alderman Rodecky has suggested, is that set in stone this evening? Because I, I'd like to hear it back, or whatever we have so far, please, if someone could.
The entire code?
No, not the entire code, just the little, the section, just 6-1-8F, and then what the amended verbiage would be.
I'm referring to our city administrator who's calling that up right now.
I'm trying to draft it right now.
Oh, excuse me.
It would say, and I don't, I can't give you verbatim, but it would say something like, "It is unlawful for any animal, even though on a leash, to be in or enter any public building, food establishment, or any store, except a kennel- building, food establishment, or any store except a kennel, veterinary clinic, grooming parlor, or pet supply store. This section shall not apply to guard dogs, guide dogs for the hearing impaired, physically disabled with their masters, blah, 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 blah. Any store or public building wishing to allow pets need to indicate such with a sticker or other..."
Signage.
...dislocation to customers, clearly notify customers.
It sounds contradictory to me.
Any other store that wishes to...
Any other store, yeah.
Well, you can't have them in.
Yes, you can. I mean, I'm still drafting this.
Any other store that wishes to...
To allow pets need to indicate such with...
I think you have to say any other store which, or public building which allowed, which wishes to be exempt from...
Oh, which wishes to be, okay.
Yeah.
Which wishes...
To be...
To be exempt from this provision must display notice, must display notice. In a public, visible location.
Right, so other than those...
Subject to attorney review.
So, other, other than those named exclusions which the city administrator just read off, including kennel or veterinarian clinic, the pet supply store, any other store or public building which wanted to avail itself of this, of an exemption from this ban, must post a public notice.
I would offer this for the consideration with respect to the amendment. Could we not offer those who wish to be exempt from the ban and force them to post saying, "No pets allowed?" And accomplish the same darn thing? Discuss amongst yourselves. Alderman McGowan still has the floor, forgive me, but...
I, I may have something to say in a few minutes, but I need to think.
Uh, Ruby and then Bruno.
So effectively, we are putting the decision into the business owner's hands and we are stating if the business chooses to allow pets, it needs to be displayed. That, that is how they, that's how the public knows that pets are allowed in that facility.
Yes and no. What you're saying is that the pets are not allowed except in certain places, then unless the business owner does something affirmatively. As opposed to removing the language, which means it's in the business owner's hands. Because, because it's not in the, I mean, right now, you have to affirmatively do something in order to be allowed to allow pets in your store.
But you can do something as simple as take a Post-it note and write "Dogs allowed" and put it on your door. Okay. Okay, yeah, and I, I think that saying "Dogs allowed" is going to be a much smaller percentage of stores than "No dogs allowed," which is why I think we should stick with notice that pets are allowed and I think that simplifies it by just sticking with "allowed only." So if you don't see the sticker, you don't take your dog there. That's my understanding.
Alderman Bruno, then Alderman Clemmons, Alderman Kilburg, I'll ask if you have any questions or comments.
Thank you, Mayor. This, the amendment gets, I think, pretty much where I was trying to go last week, as long as we don't have, basically, it's a trivial matter for any business that wishes to be pet-friendly to post they're pet-friendly, so long as we don't regulate anything about the sign that we have to enforce. Could be a Post-it note, could be a sheet of paper, magic marker, could be a pretty sticker, which I looked up on Amazon. I think that's, and it doesn't burden any, and the, those that don't avail themselves to this exemption still have the, the power of enforcement behind them because with this still in place, if someone forces themselves into the business and they don't want that dog or that pet, they can, they can complain and they do have enforcement options to, to rid their business. So I'm, it's, I think that's better than striking. Thanks.
Alderman Clemmons?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, it does seem like there might be a compromise here. It kind of sounded like everybody wants to allow businesses to have pets allowed at their discretion, but nobody loved how we were getting there. I think this does throw a bone to people who, thank you, do have concerns with allergies, who I have heard from people, in my word at least, who are, you know, concerned about taking their kids into a place where there's dogs. They will be guaranteed not to see any if, if they go into a store that doesn't have the sticker and they'll be happy with that. I've heard that from others. I'd be happy, I'm okay with, with pets being in places with just a sticker. So it does seem like it does satisfy the need here. So, thank you.
Alderman Kilburg, any comments or questions?
I picked up, I think, the amendment. I offered my amendment last week. Seems like we're gravitating back toward it, but that's fine. I've heard, I've heard enough about this.
Alderman Maladra.
Earlier tonight, you made reference to 14 stores in the downtown that have pets in them currently. Under Jim's amendment, would they be able to have pets in the stores?
Only if they have signage on the door.
Right, correct. Wet Nose would be able to have pets in the store?
Mr. Rodecky's amendment offers the exemption for pet supply stores.
Right, so I think that, I think that the amendment gets us to a place where those people who have been not compliant with the ordinance, are compliant with the ordinance, provided they put signage up saying, "We're pet-friendly," it gives people who want to shy away from stores like that, some indication that this might be a store that you could have a problem with. Whereas previously, like I said, if you come up to a door that has no sign on it with the ordinance struck completely, what's your assumption? Your assumption has to be that pets are allowed, I guess. So this way, it gives that person something definitive that they can act on. If they, if there is no sign, they can go in and with the, with the full expectation that it's, that pets aren't allowed, if there is a sign, then they have to expect exactly what they would find. I think it makes sense. Thanks.
Alderman Marks, I believe you had your hand up? You have not spoken yet?
You know, I agree. I think we, this is finally finding the compromise that we've been looking for. I think it does solve the problem of people who want to know if pets are allowed, if they are allowed. So, you know, I know I voted no last week, but if this amendment is passed, I would vote yes for this.
Just so everyone understands, ladies and gentlemen, based on the amendment and based on the language considered, the first offense, if this amendment is approved, and of course, if the main motion as amended is approved, the first offense of any store owner or building owner who does not have an appropriate sign or any sign posted is $50. That's an O ticket. That requires the police to intervene. The second fine is $100. The third fine is $500. All require the police to intervene. There is no enforcement mechanism in the ordinance shy of contacting the police department. 911, Tricom Dispatch, police officers responding to FIDO, crossing a threshold, or quite frankly, vice versa. So just for everyone's consideration. Yes.
Hi.
Good evening.
Hello. I'm back again, right?
Ms. Spitzer, correct?
Ms., I'm sorry, Sheila Spitzer from Wet Nose. I feel like this conversation has really been about us, about Wet Nose and businesses as far as shopping and store owners. But, and, and I kind of thought that initially too, until last week's meeting, when actually you brought it up about the Rover to Read program and how libraries have programs...
Can you repeat that, please? I couldn't make it up, ma'am.
I'm sorry.
Rover Read Program?
The Rover to Read Program.
Library Program.
Reading to Rover. So you'll see in schools and in libraries where children will read to dogs and you'll also see, like, another, somebody else had mentioned about therapy dogs going into nursing homes. And, you know, this is a much bigger thing than just shopping with your pet. When you say that it's a public building, that means now if, if you're going to have a sticker, I'm going to ask, is the library going to have a sticker on their door? And if they don't and they decide to have a Rover reading program, are they then in violation? And there are hotels in the community too that do allow pets. Are they going to know that they have to have a sticker on their door and they're going to be in violation? I feel, I hate to use the word unfair, but I feel it is a bit unfair to put the burden on the person who does want to accept pets as opposed to the burden on the person who doesn't want to accept pets. I think it's pretty clear...
I'm sorry, I'm trying to interrupt you. What was the word? It puts a burden on people who what, want to do pets?
I, I feel that it's unfair to put a burden on a business owner that does want to allow pets, to be the one to put the sticker up. I feel like it would be easier if you do not want pets to put a sign that says "No pets allowed." Because even if I say, say I have now to put up a sticker, let's say I don't own Wet Nose, but I own a business and I have to put up a sticker now. What if I want to choose which dogs can come in and which ones can't? Now I can't because now I have a sticker that says, "Pets are allowed." So that means if I tell them, "Oh, no, 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 your Great Dane's not allowed in my store," I might potentially have somebody that's pretty pissed off at me and says, "Well, there's a sticker on your door that says I can bring my dog in here." Well, not that dog. So now my choice as a business owner is no longer there. Does that make sense what I'm trying to say? I just, it just, I, I just... But there is, because if you, if you do own a business and, I, I think it's pretty clear that if you don't want pets, you don't want any pets. It's not about picking and choosing. It's just you just don't want pets in your, in your place of business. So then either put a sign up if you feel the need to, or when somebody comes in with a dog, just say no. I just don't know why that's so hard. I'm sorry, I mean, I, I just don't. But my, my bigger thing right now is I feel like this is not just about shopping stores. This is about public buildings as well and there are a lot of programs that are out there where dogs come in as therapy dogs. And now we're regulating that by telling them they have to post signage for programs that they already have had in existence for many, many years.
Is it hot? Is it like hot in here? It's like, my God. Alderman Bruno.
Thank you. To, to one of your points, what motivates or what animates me on, on some of this thinking here, there are probably a lot of businesses that are wholly unaware of this entire discussion.
Sure.
And I don't want them surprised that suddenly they're vulnerable, if you will, to, to pets coming in. So I think by leaving the ordinance in place, no harm, no foul to those businesses, but an easy out to permit pets into those that, that want it. I, I see no reason why that sign couldn't say, you know, "Dogs under 20 pounds allowed," something like that. But I think the, it's, it's the existing businesses that aren't pet-friendly, I, I don't want them to be blindsided, is my interpretation.
But if you think about it, don't they have the potential of being blindsided now? I mean, Geneva Commons as a shopping center has been advertised as being pet-friendly for 16 years. And if you do any type of pet-friendly search online about towns that are pet-friendly or even if you search Geneva pet-friendly, there are literally dozens of websites that promote Geneva as being a pet-friendly town. Dozens of them. You know, so I just think that people that are going to be traveling with their pets or out and about with their pets, don't make the assumption that they can go anywhere. They just don't. Usually what they'll do is they'll peek their head in and they'll say, "Is it okay?" And, and, and if they, they're told no, then they're told no. It's not on, I, I don't think that by striking or rescinding the ordinance, that it's going to put that business owner in any different situation than they are in right now. I just don't see the fundamental change of where their position is.
Alderman Ruby, did you have your hand up? Okay. On the amendment, ladies and gentlemen, this young lady in the audience, yes, please join us at the podium again. Well, don't, don't speak until you've joined us at the microphone because this is being recorded for all time.
Oh, yes, okay.
We know as Kingsfield the Pet Lady.
What I am concerned about too, if you're going to require signage that says, "Pets allowed," who is going, you know, what, what is the, all of a sudden now, all these people are out of compliance because they didn't even know they needed to have signage? They've been having dogs for 20 years in their stores or 16 years or whatever and now all of a sudden you've made this rule. Are you going to make that really known to all these business owners that immediately they need to have signage up? And if not, they're going to get a fine of $50 or $100 or $500? So I think, again, if you want signage, the best thing for them to do is no dogs allowed, no pets allowed, if they don't really want pets. And I would think that the stores that don't want pets now already have that up. I would think they already have that because we've been traditionally pet-friendly for a very, very long time. Thank you.
On the amendment, ladies and gentlemen, are we prepared to vote? On the amendment, Alderman McGowan, clarifying question?
Actually...
One moment.
May I make one suggestion, though, that it's not effective immediately?
Does the motion or concur that would not be effective until at least 30 days? Figure out a strategy if, if in fact it's successful? Yes. Second or concurs? Finally, amendments accepted. Alderman McGowan.
Sorry, I'm, so, I had my hand up a couple of times earlier and I wanted to say something. That's okay. These have been compelling, this has been a compelling discussion in favor of mandating that businesses post a sign in favor or against having pets. But I'm back to my original viewpoint, which is that we should just get rid of this code. The simplest solution is to let our code reflect the fact that Geneva is already a pet-friendly town and I'm sorry, it's to sound like a broken record. And if a business owner does not wish to have pets, simply post a sign saying, "No pets allowed." I don't know if this is interesting to anyone or not, but I was at the Commons recently and there was a sign on one of the stores saying, "Due to theft, no groups of kids any larger than three." So, and it was right there, you can't miss it, you could, right in the middle of the front door. So, it's as easy as that. I really feel like we should make this as simple as possible. Mayor Burns, you mentioned the impact that regulation would have on our police and 911 services. That's not a burden that they need and there, there's extra costs involved in that when we can just delete this ordinance from our code and just allow customers and store owners alike to rely on simple communication and basic courtesy and decency. If someone walks in with a pet, if it's a pet-friendly store such as Wet Nose and there's an unruly pet or an unruly customer there, let the business owner have the ability to ask the person to kindly leave. And if there's still a problem, then call 911. But again, that's an extreme circumstance, so I really feel that we should let our code reflect the fact that this has been a pet-friendly town, is a pet-friendly town and has been a pet-friendly town for decades. Thank you. Thank you.
Alderman Swanson, who has not yet spoken.
I, I agree with Alderman McGowan on the, the police issue. And I think there's another issue with the, the resolution that we're trying to achieve here, and that is that we're not defining what the signage should be. And I think that's a problem if they're all going to have different signage, or they're going to have it in a different place. If we don't standardize it, people don't know what to expect. So I think we're opening up a whole nother can of worms for a resolution that makes us feel better, but at the end of the day, I agree, I think a "No Dogs Allowed" sign would be more appropriate, and we should just remove the restriction on pets. Thank you.
This is on the amendment, of course. Alderman Rodecky.
Yeah, I think the, the gist is, we wanted to approach this from a positive standpoint, and that's why we're pet-friendly and will indicate that. I think that's, rather than no pets, we've, the read was, we wanted to keep it as, as positive as possible. This is not going to affect, we are pole vaulting over, I won't say the word right now, but it's, it's, it is...
I'm trying to guess the word.
Okay, well... And, and this notion that, that we don't have a, an enforcement mechanism set up, let's get seri, really, no, we don't. We don't have one for garage sales when people have three or more, or 50,000 other things. We don't have enforcement items. I don't see a plethora of 911 calls coming in from this. I don't see a, an issue with it. I think it's a reasonable compromise that spreads the unhappiness evenly, and I think it's time to call the question and have a vote on it, so.
Is that a formal call to question?
No, no, because I don't wanna go there either.
Okay, ladies and gentlemen, on the amendment, we're gonna take a rule. Six, yes, Alderman McGowan, question?
So just to clarify, is it on the Rodecky?
This is on the Rodecky.
Call to Rodecky.
That is, that is R- R- Rodecky Amendment. That's on the Rodecky Amendment, seconded by Alderman Maladra. Mr. Clerk, whenever you're ready, sir.
Mike Bruno.
Aye.
Tara Burkhart.
Aye.
Mike Clements.
Aye.
Becky Ruby.
Aye.
Ian Kilburg.
Aye.
Craig Maladra.
Aye.
Gotcha.
Thank you, Dean.
Craig Maladra.
Aye.
Richard Marx.
Aye.
Jean McGowan.
Nay.
Chairman Rodecky.
Aye.
Robert Swanson.
Nay.
The amendment passes eight to two. Back to the main motion as amended. I would make a suggestion to everyone here at the dais, and including our friend, Mr. Kilburg in Minneapolis, that I would be happy, as chair, to entertain a motion to amend the main motion as amended, and recommend that we rescind the ordinance with a sunset clause of one year, and measure the impact accordingly, based on calls to police and others, based on calls to the chamber, based on calls to the Commons, based on complaints, and then move forward there so we can actually measure the impact, if there's any impact whatsoever. If someone was, was willing to make that amendment, I would strongly encourage and...
Can we put a sunset clause on this as the amendment has passed?
You can, certainly. I don't, I mean...
I, I, I would not be in favor of putting a sunset clause. If this, if this becomes an issue or a problem, I don't wanna wait a year to bring it back up. You know, I, I, if, if this is an issue, and, and we, we so choose as a, as a council to bring it back up, and it didn't work, we can, we can amend it, but to, to put a sunset on it for a year for an ordinance that's around for 45, and, and it's, you know, we don't have major problems with it now, I don't suspect we're gonna have major problems with it afterwards, I would not be in favor of putting a sunset clause on it for review. We can bring it back up if it's a problem at, at any time, so that's my, my input. Thank you.
On the main motion as amended, ladies and gentlemen. Correct me if I'm wrong, from the dais or anyone in the audience, we are in essence stating that if you choose to, you can self-exempt yourself from this ordinance as long as, and only as long as, you post a sign stating, "Pets Welcome." That sign could be, as, as indicated by Alderman Swanson, there's no standardized size, it can be outside, it could be, who knows? Just so everyone's clear on that. Alderman McGowan.
So, I'm not an employee of the Geneva Library, but in their case, would their sign possibly say something like, "Therapy animals permitted on the premises only"?
No.
And that, would that be in compliance with this proposed amended code?
Therapy dogs and service dogs are allowed federal law.
No, therapy dogs are not.
Excuse me.
Well, service...
Service dogs are allowed, yeah. Therapy dogs.
Therapy dogs.
It would have to state that, I think ergo the complication, in my opinion.
But is that a correct assumption, then, that for a public building such as the library, if they have a, or a nursing home, or a school, any public institution that has some type of animal therapy, even if it's one day out of the year, what kind of sign do, do they need to have on their door to be in compliance with the city code?
They need to have a sign.
And what, what, what is the sign?
Not defined.
The ordinance doesn't define it.
So really, it could be a, a comic strip, strip of Snoopy, and they could say, "Well, that was our sign."
Alderman Maladra.
Are we worried about what type of sign is used to post, "No Pets Allowed"? Or should we write in our code, "What type of sign is required for that"? I think, I think it, to that argument, you know, it works both ways. If you're worried about the type of sign, and you're gonna require a certain type of sign, you would require it for those who wanna post, "No Pets Allowed," just as you would for those who wanna post, "Pets Are Allowed." As for the rest of it, the library and everything else, so I, I made the assumption that therapy dogs and service dogs were the same, I apologize for that, and so, yeah, there's gonna be some pitfalls here, just as there would be pitfalls if we rescind the ordinance completely. Nothing's ever perfect. I appreciate your perspective. My problem is, I also appreciate your perspective, and I appreciate yours and yours. We're trying to navigate a minefield here. It didn't look like a minefield at first, but it turns out it's a very tricky thing to do. Are we gonna get it perfectly? No. The way I look at it, we're gonna make mistakes, but the mistakes we're gonna make right now are mistakes that still enable those stores we've heard from who want to be pet-friendly to be pet-friendly. And it enables those stores who we've heard from, who are upset by the change to rescind, to not have to do anything, and it enables those stores that we haven't heard from to not have to do anything. So to me, that seems like a, a pretty good, a pretty good, not-so-good solution. Thanks.
But those stores that we have not heard from are indeed required to do something if they choose to be pet-friendly.
Well, correct, that's only because currently those stores, we're losing sight of the fact that those stores currently are in violation of the law. Period. Unfortunate, but true.
Alderman McGowan.
Thank you. I just have a few questions. What's the point of having a sign ordinance if there's no regulation regarding the type of sign required? And what happens if someone posts a sign saying, "Pets Welcome," but the sign falls off, or someone can't see, didn't see the sign, and they walk into the store expecting there to not be pets, but lo and behold, there's a dog there? And what happens if a, a funny person makes a bunch of signs saying, "Pets Welcome," and just sticks them up all over the place, where there weren't before? So what then? I guess I'm, I'm trying to approach this with, like, a logic puzzle, just to get the most simple solution, and I guess, least, like, with zero cost. So, in my opinion, that means getting rid of the ban that's currently in our city code, letting our town reflect on paper that we are pet-friendly, which we are, and giving business owners, you know, the, the right to post something saying, "No Pets Allowed," if that's what they, if that's what they wish. To me, that is the most simple, logical action. Thank you.
On the main motion as amended, ladies and gentlemen. Alderman Kilburg, anything you'd like to add?
No, I've heard about all.
Mr. Clerk, please take the rule.
Mike Bruno.
Aye.
Tara Burkhart.
Aye.
Michael Clements.
Aye.
Becky Ruby.
Aye.
Ian Kilburg.
Aye.
Craig Maladra.
Aye.
Kilburg.
Richard Marx.
Aye.
Jean McGowan.
I'm sorry, I need clarification on what we're voting for.
The main motion as amended, which includes the language that was approved that offer...
Didn't we just, didn't we already vote on that?
We only approved the amendment, and now it's the main motion as amended, yeah.
Oh, I see. Thank you very much for clarifying. Nay.
Nay. Chairman Rodecky.
Aye.
Robert Swanson.
Nay.
The motion passes eight affirmative votes, two nay votes. We have 30 days to implement. Item 11B, as in boy. Approve ordinance number 2018-26, amending Title VIII, Public Ways and Property. Section 8-3, Utility Facilities and, excuse me, and Construction, to add Chapter 20, Wireless Facilities Within City Rights of Way. So moved. Alderman Marx makes the motion.
Second.
Alderman Bruno makes the second. Questions or comments? There's, obviously, we all know there's been a lot of correspondence and information provided via the city administrator and others regarding this matter, so Alderman Bruno.
Thank you, Mayor. Last week, when I voted for this, there was, I, I had a good level of comfort that we were hamstrung by the state with very little latitude. We've done what we can, to the extent that we can, to give what little local control on this matter, or to retain some local control on this matter. I reached out to Representative Anderson, who fought against the state bill simply because of the not having local control. He concurs with, with staff. His firm in private practice writes these types of contracts, and he believes that, and convinced me, that we are doing what we can, and should pass this. Thank you.
Thank you. From the dais. Alderman Clements.
Thank you, Mayor. So, please, correct me if I'm wrong, but just wanna go on record as saying, my understanding of this is that 5G deployment is going to occur in Geneva, and there is very little we can do to control that deployment, and that this amendment to Title VIII gives us the maximum amount of control that we can have, given the recent bill that Illinois passed. And that would include things like making sure that the aesthetics are as good as they can be to our liking in the historic district, for example, so that we don't have hideous things up and down Third and State Street. We would have some, say, in the placement of a new utility pool within 100 feet. If we don't do this, and you have a pool in your, like, a new one could go right in front of your yard, but with this, the city might have some ability to, to relocate it. It allows us to maximize what little revenue we can get from the 5G deployment. If we don't do this, we might not be able to maximize what we can make on it. Aside from that, that's it. I mean, so it seems like it's something we kind of have to do, and if we don't do this, the, the 5G deployment's still happening. Like, we're, the city's not deciding tonight that we're opening the doors and the floodgates to allow small cell antennas to come into town. That's not what this is about. We're trying to actually limit the impact and maximize the opportunity we get from that deployment. So, that's my two cents. Thank you.
Alderman Maladra.
There's been some question about the, the need to do this by August 1st, and as I understand it, the, the timing comes from what the state has done, and basically, come August 1st, any action that takes place in the city in this regard takes place under the State Act. And anything we might do after that would not cover that project? Is that correct?
Sort of. So if, if we do not have an ordinance in place come August 1st, and a carrier or wireless service provider comes to town, they fall under the State Act, and they only have to comply with the State Act, if they come before any ordinance is enacted here. So whether, so, that wireless providers right now know that the state law has passed. They also know that the state law provided municipalities the 60-day window to put their ordinances in place. So...
Thank you. Anyone from the audience, questions or comments regarding this matter, item 11B as in boy? Yes, sir. Welcome.
Mr. Mayor.
Good evening.
Counsel, thank you for listening to my comments. My name is John Hunter, 919 Red Wing Drive, Geneva. I have a number of questions, as, as I know that the zoning commission, you know, did as well, when they reviewed the Title 11.
Mr. Hunter, for your benefit, Title 11 is not a topic of discussion, is it?
I understand.
Okay. Title VIII is, so...
Right. I was just mentioning that, you know, there was a lack of information and knowledge on that side of things.
Thank you, sir.
So sticking, right, sticking with the Title VIII. The first question I had is, what is the scope of these changes that are being presented here? Does, when, when you say right-of-way, does that mean all of the city roads? Does it mean, you know, the arterial roads, the neighborhoods, the historic district? Are all of these areas subject to this technology being put in, in the right-of-way, in those sections? And I'm, I don't know how you wanted to do the questions, if...
I'm gonna write them all down, and I'm gonna seek counsel from both our Director of Public Works and a gentleman that's with us to provide additional counsel on this matter as well.
Perfect. And then, so, from, from my own understanding is, say, 38, would that be considered a Kane County street, or is that under the auspices of Geneva?
It's actually under the auspices of the state of Illinois.
Oh, so it's Illinois.
However, we have, for lack of a better word, a mutual...
We received notice from the state of Illinois that they will defer to any municipal ordinance for their rights of way.
I see. Okay, thank you. And then...
And same for Kane County roads. They will also defer to the municipal...
Like Randall Road or Pecan Road.
Fabian Parkway.
Exactly. Fabian Parkway, correct.
Gotcha. For the downtown historic district, is this going to, are these subject to a review by the Historic Planning Commission, or, you know, does the state law just do away with all that? Because I saw some language in there that it seemed as though that wasn't gonna be a requirement, but I wanted to get some clarification on that.
Got it.
Does anybody happen to know the num, the number of miles of right-of-way that we're talking about in Geneva?
We have an approximate number. We'll be happy to share that with you, because Mr. Babica has all this stuff on the top of his head. It's unbelievable.
As far as the commercial and industrial sites, does that fall under Title VIII or Title 11, the commercial and industrial? Because I'm, I'm curious, because does this, does this open up something where, say, someone who has a commercial property could put a small cell site on there? That was a question.
Got it.
I did notice that there was talk of a stealth, they called it a concealed facility. And so, I was, I'm a little concerned about that, because I wanted to just make sure that someone who comes to the town to maybe buy a home is gonna know that they're buying a home that's very close to a wireless transmission facility. So, that's one of my concerns. So, that's one of my concerns. Do we happen to know, and this might be for the consultant, do we happen to know the coverage of a typical site? I mean, in number of feet, or square feet, however they measure it? And do, and another question for him would be, what would be the average, the length of a typical small cell contract? So, say, because I imagine that this is all going to be done via contract by pole or by number of poles, so I'm just kind of curious to get an idea of, you know, what that entails.
Got it.
Aesthetics was another, you know, concern, as far as are aesthetics only going to be considered with regard to the historic district, or is it going to be all over? And because I've seen some pictures of what these installations look like, and they're, you know, they're laden with boxes and cables and, and, you know, other unsightly infrastructure. So, that's a, that's an issue there. Also, from the standpoint of the ground-based enclosures that, that these poles are going to utilize, these things will be probably at the base or immediately adjacent to any given pole. And probably the size of this podium. And so, having these, depending on what the coverage is, having a number of these, I think, is going to affect the visual, you know, beauty of the city. Also, in regards to aesthetics, it's kind of ties in. This equipment typically is going to need fans to cool the equipment, and as, as we all know, with the fans on our computers, they get loud after a little while. So, noise is going to be, you know, has to be a consideration there. When I looked through the, the fee section, I saw that published fee was going to be roughly two hundred dollars a year, and I'm curious where that number comes from. Is, is it based on something? So, to cover my concerns, I just wanted to say that we, in looking into it, I've, I've found a severe lack of independent studies that were not industry-funded, which, you know, can fairly say they've looked at this technology. It's a good technology, it's viable, and it's going to be around for a while. So, other concerns are the quantity of sites, and the visual impact, which I've mentioned already. And then, also considering that possibly multiple providers would be on a given pole, which would then add equipment to that pole, which would then, you know, make it look even more cluttered and busy. The next one would be close proximity to residents and visitors. What it looks like to me is this technology is bringing the cellular signals down to the level of people, and to me, that seems like it's not a really good use of technology, and any technology that has to come to that level where it's, has to blanket the whole community is not really desirable, I would say. So, that's, that's a concern. Another one would be property values, because I feel that that's not really a good selling point to say, "Well, I have a cellular transmission facility, you know, thirty feet from my bedroom." That's a concern. And I'm sure it must be a concern to, to other residents who happen to be, happen to have, say, a light pole right on their parkway, right in front of their house, because this is likely where that, something like that would go. So, and then the last one is, you know, the health and safety of residents, and that ties to my first point, that there hasn't been a lot of studies as far as the safety and efficacy of these things. And though I know that you've been told that because of the Telecommunications Act of nineteen ninety-six, that you can't consider health or environment, as they say, but I can assure you that us residents do have that as a concern, and we are considering that. So, in closing, I just wanted to say that I respectfully request the council to step back and see where some of these pending challenges and other states are going with this. And, and then if there's minimal consequences to not meeting this August first deadline, I don't think that all everything's going to break loose on August first, and you're going to be, you know, get a hundred permit applications, but, could happen. But I would respectfully say that we step back and gather more information, and get some of these questions answered for the residents, and, and then see where this goes. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hunter.
Appreciate it.
Ladies and gentlemen of the council, and those present and tuning in, I have recorded sixteen questions that Mr. Hunter posed. Some can be consolidated. Is it the council's desire? Well, first, let me ask if anyone else is present who also wants to speak to this issue. If not, I'll try my best to consolidate. I'm going to ask Mr. Babica and Mr. Lepore to join us at the podium. Mr. Babica is our Director of Public Works. Mr. Anthony Lepore is the consultant we have retained to provide us sage advice and counsel. He represents a company called Citiescape, which is doing work with Elgin and St. Charles, among other communities. Gentlemen, how, how would you like to proceed?
Interestingly enough, I came up with fourteen questions.
Fourteen, okay. You consolidated them. Okay. Scope of changes.
Came up with thirteen, so.
I consolidate even further.
That's why we like you. Fair enough. Fair enough.
I will deal with those questions sequentially. With respect to the scope of the changes affected by Title Eight, yes, this is all prompted by the passage and enactment of SB fourteen fifty-one, a bill which mirrors in great detail a bill that has been passed or is pending in nineteen other states. And so, you are not alone in dealing with this issue. I just spent five months in Coconut Creek and Coral Springs, Florida, passing legislation dealing with the Florida version of this bill. And, and if I could take the last question first, the day after it was passed in Coral Springs, sixty-eight applications were submitted.
Just for the record, sixty-eight applications the day after the ordinance was passed?
Yes. In terms of the, the scope, does it affect all right-of-ways? Yes, not only all right-of-ways, both city, county, and state, but also commercial, in, in Illinois and in a few other jurisdictions, it also was expanded to encompass private property of a commercial or industrial nature. But only as it relates to either small cells or microcells, which are very defined types of wireless communications facilities, both in size and nature. And, and so, you will not have a hundred-foot monopole being erected in a right-of-way. These are all limited in both their physical size and, and the nature of the coverage area that they can cover. Is there a review process for historical? Yes, both federally, Section one oh six, review has to be done for small cell facilities, just like any other type of facility. They are typically categorically exempt, but the review does have to be done. And the state legislation did preserve the right for review by the, under the Illinois Historical Preservation Act. So, there is still a review process, but I will tell you that, generally speaking, the facilities, particularly since you are going to require them to be concealed, will pass muster in terms of historical preservation review. Because you are requiring, specifically in your code, as proposed this evening, that anything that is either in a historical district, or can be seen by property within a historical district, be concealed and harmonious with that historical district. Approximate miles of right-of-way, I'll defer to Rich on that one, because I have no idea.
Unfortunately, off the top of my head, I can't give you an accurate number.
Approximation's fine.
Well, there's seventy-nine center lane miles of road. Double that, we're probably looking at about a hundred and fifty to a hundred and sixty miles of right-of-way.
So, for, as I said, for commercial and industrial zone parcels, small cells will be subject to regulation under Title Eight. Traditional wireless infrastructure, larger infrastructure, if it would want to be colo- located there, would be dealt with, with Title Eleven when you revamp that. The question of concealed facilities and proximity to residences and whatnot, a small cell typically covers about an eighth of a mile. The whole concept of small cell wireless is because the industry has a certain amount of spectrum that it can use, and the only way it can increase its capacity is to reuse that spectrum. So, if you imagine, you have a cell tower that covers a, you know, a traditional hundred-and-twenty-foot monopole, covers a, a large circle area. It's, it's more of a honeycomb when you look at it on an engineering map. The way you increase the amount of capacity is you reduce the height of the pole, and you put up a new pole, and the first pole covers now half the area, and the new pole covers the other half of the area, and you reuse the spectrum you were using here, over here. And then you reduce, 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 and now you suddenly go from, you know, one big circle to eight circles, for example. And each one of those is a smaller cell, covering a smaller area, but then hands off as you go from location to location, from one cell to the other. That's how the technology works. So, the industry has at least suggested that when a five G standard is finally approved and agreed upon, which it doesn't exist yet in the United States, all that advertising about five G and whatnot, doesn't exist yet. It's coming, but it doesn't exist yet. They finally just agreed on a chipset standard for the handsets, but when it does come, you're looking at, for each carrier, who's going to want to have throughput in, basically everywhere, to stream wirelessly what you get on your Comcast cable line, or your telephone, or fiber line right now, or FiOS type of thing, they're going to want to be able to provide that wirelessly. In order to do that, they need a cell near you, be it your home or your business, or your vehicle on the highway, because those are also going to provide the ability for autonomous vehicles, this network, this five G network, and the Internet of Things. It's going to be why your refrigerator is going to be able to tell you when you're at work that you need to pick up some milk before you come home. That's what five G is going to do. So, the typical private leasehold term for a wireless facility, generally for the carriers, is twenty-five years with multiple renewal rights after that. You, of course, can agree upon whatever you want to, in terms of use of municipal property, but the, the legislature has mandated that, to answer one of the other questions, you can only charge two hundred dollars a year for use of your right-of-way per site. And that's an indefinite, in essence, lease of the public right-of-way, which you will collect a whopping sum of two hundred dollars, which I will tell you is more than some other states. Florida, you get a hundred bucks a year. Arizona got three fifty. You know, it, it all varies from state to state, but you didn't do as badly as some states, and you didn't do quite as good as some other states in terms of the revenue projection. The aesthetics question, we specifically designed this regulation to give you the most amount of protection in terms of aesthetics, because that's the one area that the legislature said you could still regulate in. And so, there's, there's multiple reasons for doing that. One, you want it to look nice. If you've got to have it, you want it to look nice. Two, requiring concealment facilitates the the prevention of additions and growth to that infrastructure down the road, because if you add something to it that has the effect of destroying the concealment technology, you don't get the federal protection. So, part of the reason for requiring concealment is to give you more control over both the initial installation and future installation. On that same subject, which was the, the, another question about multiple providers on a, on each site, we also provided language in your legislation for something called neutral host antenna. The goal of neutral host antenna is that multiple providers can use the same piece of equipment for their service, thereby minimizing the number of additional antennas subsequently attached to that site. That's the goal of the requiring neutral host being utilized in your right-of-way, is to, again, minimize the impact of that infrastructure in your public right-of-way. Noise abatement issue, this, these facilities, yes, they do have, in the equipment cabinets, just like any computer, do have fans that typically, the cabinets are insulated, and, and absent, you don't get the noise issue that you have on a traditional macro cell facility. But you could obviously include some noise abatement. I'm sure there, there are standards promulgated by the state in terms of building code and whatnot. You could adopt those if you, if you so choose. The fee I already discussed, which is regulated by state law, and we're tracking this statutory language exclusively with that. Proximity to
Peoples, how close they were to-
Peoples homes and whatnot. Again, because of the nature of the technology, lowering the height and reducing the amount of power each site has allows you to reuse that spectrum, so you're not you're not receiving the level of RF that you would receive, for example, if you happen to be standing a hundred feet in the air in front of a macro cell, which has a much higher output of power. What the federal law says is that you can require, and we do, that the applicants certify that they meet the FCC RF exposure standards promulgated in federal law. Typically, a small cell facility will generate RF somewhere between point five and point six of one percent of the federal standard. So, they are under one-hundredth of the federal standard for a small cell in terms of RF emissions. Radio frequency. There, there's a federal standard about how much RF exposure is permissible, and you have to use what's called type-accepted equipment. In other words, it's only allowed to emit a certain amount of radio frequency, and, and you have to certify the equip, both the equipment and then your infrastructure. When you build it, you have to provide certification to the FCC that you're not exceeding the RF, and we're asking, basically, that the applicants provide that same certification to you, so that you know that they are not approaching the, the RF emission standards. The question of cluttered poles, again, the neutral host antenna is, requirement is designed to address that issue, and the goal will be to accommodate multiple carriers on a single pole, rather than have each individual carrier want to put a pole up on the same block, because, you know, Verizon wants a pole, and then suddenly AT&amp;T wants a pole, and T-Mobile wants a pole. The goal is to get them to work together collaboratively. Kind of like herding cats, but nevertheless, we've, we've successfully deployed that technology in-
I'm going to kindly ask you to keep all pet references to-
Sorry, I apologize. We've successfully deployed that technology in Savannah. Got Verizon to build out the neutral host network there, and then the other carriers are grafting onto that when they want to deploy. Property values, I've been to a lot of public hearings, and, and the issue of property values is always raised. The industry will always present an appraiser who will tell you it has no effect on property values. And the opponents will always provide an appraiser who will tell you it absolutely has an effect on property values. You know, the beauty is in the eye of the beholder. I live literally across the street from a two-hundred-foot broadcast tower with wireless service on it. It doesn't benefit me one spit, because the one-direction wireless service doesn't go is down. It goes in every other direction, but it doesn't go down, so it doesn't, doesn't affect me at all. When the realtor showed me the home, she quickly wanted to close the drapes, so I didn't see the tower across the street, and I said, "No, no, that's how I earn my living. It's okay with me." But, but I know it's an issue. I have appeared, as I said, in a number of communities. I have appeared, as I said, in a number of communities. Some people want the service. I represent a number of rural communities in Virginia who, they're begging for facilities to be built, because their kids are driving to McDonald's to do their homework on the internet, because they can't get anything at home. So, again, it's a necessary part of our societal lives at this point, and the goal is to design it and deploy it in a fashion where it becomes invisible, in essence, to you and to the landscape by designing it in a fashion where it is appropriate for the community. You know, what works in South Florida, concealed palm trees, wouldn't work here very well, or wouldn't work in the community. I just finished a tower in Homer, Alaska. A palm tree wouldn't work there very well, but they did a forest watchtower, fire watchtower, and that did work. That met their needs. Health and safety, yes. The 1996 Act prohibits you from considering any issues involving radio frequency emissions. You obviously can and should and do, in this regulation, consider physical safety, traffic sightlines, all of those issues when it comes to the physical placement of the equipment and the cabinets. Going back to the cabinets and the aesthetics of that, you have a multitude of options. We've provided a hierarchy of how to best conceal them in this regulation. One, by vaulting them where possible, meaning putting them underground or into the ground so that they are less visible. Another option, which I just accomplished in the South Florida community, was we mandated a wrap using that community's art master plan. They had developed a master plan for public art, and so any wireless infrastructure in the public right-of-way has to adopt the standard set forth in that community's art master plan and wrap the cabinet in some type of artistic PVC wrap that they put on the vehicles, advertising and whatnot, the same type of technology. They have to wrap the cabinets in that, so that if you've got to have them there, and this is sort of an approximation of what a cabinet would be in some instances. Sometimes they're more like those electrical utility boxes, lower but wider, but at least if you're wrapping it in some sort of artistic expression, it doesn't, you know, detract from the aesthetics of the community. I think those were all of the questions. I touched on them. I'm happy to entertain any other specific questions.
I think you did.
You may have.
Mr. Hunter, how did he do?
Pretty good. I have some follow-ups.
I need more paper. Questions or comments from the council for Mr. Lepore or Mr. Babica? Alderman Marks?
Can I notice, maybe this question is for Stephanie. I'm not sure that there is an application fee for each. Is there also a building permit fee? And if so, can we have a building permit fee on this or not on top of this?
The only fees are the ones enumerated in the ordinance.
So you cannot have a building permit fee? It's just those? That's all the state allows? That's what I wondered. Okay. Thank you.
Alderman Clements?
Thank you. Simple question, again, just so I understand this. Regardless of this change that we're looking at tonight, we cannot stop a 5G facility from being put in the community. Is that correct?
You can no longer deny a very defined term, a small wireless facility or a micro wireless facility, to be placed on a public right-of-way or on private property in commercial or industrial zone districts. State law now precludes you from denying an application for that type of facility in that physical location.
Thank you.
Alderman Kilburg, any questions or comments for either Mr. Lepore or Director Babica?
My questions were answered by staff.
Thank you, sir. Alderman Burghart?
Thanks for being here tonight. You've been very helpful. I heard your firm is going to be working with St. Charles and Elgin on something similar?
Yes.
Will they meet the August 1 deadline?
They will not. And they will be bound to process any applications that they receive under the state law, which, of course, does not have the concealment provisions and the neutral host antenna provisions that I've built into yours to give you a great degree of protection.
Have there been any successful lawsuits in other states by private property owners or cities against...
So the state of Texas passed a similar bill. San Antonio and a few other communities sued the state of Texas Legislature because of a quirk in the Texas Constitution, which said that public entities cannot give away private property. It was based on an 1840 Texas Constitution provision that said that, back then, towns were giving away land to the railroads to get the railroad to come through town, and effectively, it's kind of what's happening here, is that the towns are being forced to give away public rights-of-way to private companies to monetize, and that lawsuit is still pending. Forty communities in Ohio challenged the Ohio version of this bill, but it was not on the substance of the bill, but rather it was tacked onto, and I know you're going to hate to hear this, a pet store bill that was in the legislature.
Did we not warn you, sir?
They, it was tacked onto the end of a pet store bill, and the Ohio Constitution says one topic, one bill provision, and so they challenged it on that. That is also still pending resolution. I think they may have just settled that lawsuit. I'm not sure what the outcome was, but I think I just read something in the Trade Magazine that there was a resolution to that either this week or last week. But those are the only two states where the law has been challenged. I just finished working in Sedona, Arizona. The Arizona Legislature passed a very similar bill to this, not only rights-of-way but commercial and industrial property. North Carolina did also. Sedona wanted to take it to court, could not get any other communities to join them in that. They opted to instead pass as much legislation as they could. They specified the concealment because of that area to a specific type of pine tree that is native to the Red Rock region of Sedona, and so concealed facilities there will be designed and built to look like this particular type of pine tree. So they went to that level of design, because they thought that was appropriate for their community.
It's money, right? Telecommunications, it's money is making this happen across the state? Because personally, I'd rather my fridge not talk to me and I not have a refrigerator-sized wireless facility in front of my house. I think Illinois residents, I hope, when they start seeing this happen, will be up in arms, because we don't have to drive to McDonald's for internet service. We have had it statewide for quite a long time. If this gets rescinded at the state level, if a new government is in the State House, is that possible?
Now, I'm going to give you some even worse news. The Senate Commerce Committee is considering this bill right now, so Federal Senate Commerce Committee is considering, basically, a mirror version of this at the federal level, so you might want to mention that to Senators Duckworth and Durbin, that it might not be a good idea to support that bill. But it's coming. Senator Thune and Senator Schultz out of Hawaii have introduced it in the telecommunications subcommittee. They're supposed to have hearings on it, I think, this week. I have petitioned and cajoled Senator Nelson, who's the senior member of the full Commerce, Senate Commerce Committee, and his staff, who I've met with repeatedly, advising of the ill effects of this bill on a national level. And I don't know if it's going to emerge from the Senate Commerce Committee in any form, or what version will come out of the House, because there's a companion bill in the House, but the likelihood is there's an industry pushing for this bill, and given the current constitution of this Congress, I suspect that if they do anything, it'll be something like this, in terms of passage of the law, that will unfortunately adversely affect everyone in this country to one respect or another, in terms of not being able to have a say over what infrastructure goes into the public right-of-way in front of your home.
So if that doesn't happen at the federal level, if at the state we were going to get a change in political party that decided to overturn, would we be able to rescind this at the city level?
So if that were to happen, anything that's already been permitted into the right-of-way would, I believe, be grandfathered in. You'd probably be able to preclude future installations, but I think anything that was legally permitted at the time it was permitted would have grandfather rights to remain.
What do you think the best part about our local ordinance is? I mean, what do you think is the best part we're able to do?
I've pushed the limit as far as you can regulate. I've walked you right up to the line. I haven't let you cross the line, but I've walked you right up to the line in terms of how you can regulate it. The concealment does, as I said, two different things. It makes it look better, and it also prevents the multiplication of infrastructure on that pole, because current federal law allows you, once you have a pole, 47 U.S.C. 1455A says, once there is a wireless facility, an existing wireless facility, you, and Congress used this exact language, shall approve and may not deny a addition to that pole as long as it doesn't exceed certain size parameters. And so, but one of the things you can do, one of the reasons you can deny, of a couple of enumerated reasons, is if that addition has the effect of destroying the concealment efforts of the existing infrastructure. And so that's the reason for pushing for concealment throughout your community on all new infrastructure, is to prevent the addition of additional infrastructure on that pole and ruining the concealment elements of it.
And finally, you mentioned a bunch of different communities where you've worked. Who was your client in those cases?
Oh, in all of those cases, with one exception, the client has been the community. I just finished a project in Huntington, California, where the city had hired a different consultant who had advocated that the city grant the application for 16 small cell facilities in a, it's a bedroom community south of San Francisco, and it's entirely residential. There's no commercial industrial property at all in the community, and they wanted to build 16 poles. In California, the legislature passed this bill. Jerry Brown rejected it, vetoed it, but the consultant for the city was advocating that the city grant the application to the tower company. It wasn't a provider, it was a tower company looking to build. Basically, they were looking to build to find tenants and do that. The error of the tower company was putting a, or proposing to put a pole outside the bedroom window of the attorney for the California Public Utilities Commission home, and he wasn't really keen on that idea, and he galvanized the community to hire us to provide a countervailing opinion, which ultimately held the day with the city council there, and they ultimately rejected the application primarily because they were spec towers. There wasn't a wireless provider associated with them, and it was just a tower company looking to build the towers and then lease them out. And the legislature here in Illinois, as in every other state where this bill has passed, has made that harder for you to do, because they've now defined a wireless provider to be a tower company. Even though a tower company doesn't provide wireless services, they are now defined as a wireless provider under state law, which is completely illogical, but that's what the legislature did. The legislature also passed a set of definitions which define colocation as the first piece of wireless equipment on a pole, whereas the federal government defines colocation as the second piece of equipment on a pole, because that would be logical. You're colocating on an existing piece of infrastructure, not under state law. Colocation is now the first piece of equipment on a pole. It's a bad bill. It was drafted by the industry. It was foisted upon, as I said, about 19 legislatures at this point. They all put their paw prints on it one way or another, so there's variations amongst them, but I'm dealing with the same bill in multiple states. It's basically all I've been doing since last year, is going from community to community and addressing this particular issue.
Thank you very much for being here. Thanks, Mayor.
If I could, before then, I just also would like to point out to the city council that staff has been working with Anthony and his associates since November of last year. It was a nice distraction to the garbage contract. But basically, all the senior staff, with the exception of the fire chief and the police chief, who had cursory review, participated in this, including the electrical superintendent and both his managers, Jennifer and Aaron, as well as the water utility, Water and Wastewater Utility, Bob Van Gescum, as well as a city engineer. So there has been extensive staff review throughout every iteration that has come out of the State House, every friendly amendment. When the governor enacted the Small Wireless Act on June 1, Anthony and his team presented three different versions, I shouldn't say three different versions, but three reviews that were reviewed by staff almost on a weekly basis. So your staff has been heavily involved in this process since November of last year.
Before I recognize Alderman Bruno, a quick question for Anthony. You referenced that 40 communities in Ohio have sued the Ohio Legislature?
The state of Ohio.
The state of Ohio. Any approximation of how much total monies they have invested in that suit? Do you know?
I don't.
Okay. Alderman Bruno?
Thank you, Mayor. First, thanks. It's been very informative, and I think I understand it better than I thought I would have. Alderman Burghart almost asked exactly the same question I wanted, but if, you know, some municipalities are taking on lawsuits in opposition to this, if we pass this ordinance, it would seem that doesn't preclude us from a lawsuit going forward. It doesn't, in some way, hamstring us. I don't know if, I probably should have gotten the city attorney's attention. I don't know if we have a... No, that's...
My apologies, sir.
By passing this ordinance here, municipalities are suing, or some municipalities are suing the states or whomever. By our passing this, this doesn't preclude us if some opportunity or need or desire came up in the future. This doesn't necessarily preclude us from deciding, though, we're going to pursue another, our own lawsuit to mitigate some issues.
No, I don't think so.
Thank you.
By the way, also, Anthony, I believe the city of Chicago is exempt?
Oh, yes. So, yeah.
Let that settle in for a moment.
Yeah. Any city over a million in population is exempt from this bill, shockingly.
So that's every city over a million in Illinois?
Every city over a million in Illinois is exempt from this bill. Much like in Florida, barrier island communities with less than 10,000 residents are also exempt from the Florida legislation. Can I tell you the one community that meets that definition? The town of Palm Beach, Florida.
From the desk. Alderman McGowan.
So, hi, Mr. Lepore. Thanks for being here. I should have asked this earlier, but can you please just give an explanation of, again, who you are and what company you work for?
Sure.
And what is your connection to all of this?
Sure. So the firm I am, one of the partners of, is called Citiescape Consultants. We were formed in 1998 in South Florida. We came out of a background of a wireless management firm, an electrical and broadcast engineer, and myself as a communications attorney, and we bonded together to provide a turnkey solution to local governments, who were struggling with, at the time, the passage of the 1996 telecommunications act and the need to regulate the placement of wireless infrastructure in their communities, and helping them both develop regulations for the placement of that infrastructure, providing technical expertise to backstop the regulations once in place, because staff were not electrical engineers in that sense of the word, in terms of broadcast or wireless engineers, and providing the technical expertise to do that. And then as a third component, we would provide wireless management services for those communities that chose to use their public property and monetize it by leasing it to wireless companies. We would handle the leasing and the management and all of that. We would handle the leasing and the management and all of that aspects of it. It's grown from those three components to also doing, we do what's called wireless master planning, where we come in and we map your entire community, your existing infrastructure, and then we use the same CAD software that the tower companies use and the wireless companies use to predict where the future infrastructure is going to go so that you can better plan for where that infrastructure is going to be needed in the future, based on your population growth, your trends in your community and whatnot, and you can manage that, just like a master plan for any other type of utility that you would do in your community. And so those are the, sort of the panoply of things that our firm does. My department is on the head end, if you will, which is the regulatory aspect of it, helping communities grapple with the ever-changing laws. So you had the 1996 Act, and then it was a bit of a lull. The industry was sort of happy for a while. Then they got unhappy with the amount of time it was taking local government to make decisions on citing things. So they went to the FCC and got passed what was called a shot clock, where you had to act within a certain number of days, depending on what type of facility it was. Then they passed in the 2012 Job Creation Act, what was called Section 6409. I cited it before, 47 USC 1455, which says that you shall approve and may not deny certain types of infrastructure being sought to be located in your community. And so since 2008, pretty much every year or two, I've had to go back and rewrite regulations I wrote in the early 2000s, and then also write new regulations for new communities who've come on board and get them up to speed on just compliance with federal law. Then the industry figured out that they could get a lot more done if they went to the state legislatures and did it one at a time, state by state. The state legislatures were much more pliable than Congress in terms of getting things done and getting things passed. And so now my frequent flyer miles have increased dramatically because I am running around the country, dealing with all these laws as they get passed in different jurisdictions.
Okay, so were you brought in, okay, so my understanding is you were brought in by Geneva City staff to help us navigate?
The state law.
The state law that's being kind of brought upon us.
What happened was, we did a presentation in St. Charles last summer that all of the planners and other staff were invited to from the surrounding communities, where we predicted that this bill was going to pass and what was going to happen and what you were going to have to do. That was, I think, last July. And sure enough, it came to pass, and staff contacted us and said, okay, well, you know, the bill's going to pass in some form or another. We need to get ahead of it and make sure that we're compliant with it when it becomes effective so that we provide as much protection as we can for our community.
So you mentioned that St. Charles and Batavia are not going to meet the August 1st?
No, Elgin.
That's incorrect.
Elgin?
It's on St. Charles' agenda this evening, and it's on Batavia's agenda this evening.
Okay, so what were the two towns?
They just may not be working with Citiescape.
Oh, I see. So, again, backing up, so you mentioned it was Elgin and St. Charles?
See, Elgin and St. Charles have contracts pending with us to help them with it. They may have chosen to go it alone just to make the deadline, just because I'm only one guy and I can only be in so many places at a time.
But you said earlier that they're not meeting the August 1st deadline?
I didn't think they were, because I thought they were going to be working with me, but I guess maybe they've chosen to go it alone.
Okay. I was just wondering what the reason was for them to not be meeting the deadline, that's all. So, another quick question. Someone explain to me, what happens if we vote against approving this ordinance tonight? Then what? I just need more clarification. I'm sorry, what?
No, incorrect. We would have an option to, again, put this on an agenda item. I would strongly recommend that if we vote this down tonight, and I would, in fact, insist that we have this on every agenda up until August 1, because I do believe, and you stated it very well, Mr. Lepore, that the day after this ordinance was passed in California, I believe it was, Florida, 68 applications were filed. I suspect we're going to see a similar avalanche here.
So if we pass this ordinance tonight, we would be receiving phone calls tomorrow morning, asking for...
Well, it wouldn't take effect till, in essence.
Oh.
But I think we, I think we protect ourselves as best we can.
It would be taking effect when? Just August 1st? And that's when we would be receiving phone calls?
It'll take effect upon passage of the ordinance.
Immediately, right. But if we do nothing, August 1, then, the state law takes effect.
I see.
Then we're subject to the, I think you stated it well, the illogical...
And I can also add, one of the other things the state law does is it permits an applicant to submit up to 25 locations on a single application. So they can come in with one application. Here's our application. Here's our application fee. And they can specify 25 sites, which staff will now have 30 days to decide if they are complete or not, and then you will have to adjudicate within 90 days if they're going on utility poles and 120 days if there are new poles.
Can I just ask for clarification? If we approve this ordinance this evening, and we're basically adopting our own set of regulation within whatever, you know, boundaries are allowed to us or permitted, would we then receive phone calls tomorrow morning from people? Because they'll have, they'll have heard, if they're watching online, say, right now, okay, Geneva, City of Geneva passed this ordinance, so we don't need to wait for August 1st to come around. We can start applying now and get these, like, key, or get it going.
Well, I can't tell you for sure that we're going to get applications tomorrow morning, but what I can tell you is that the Friday before, so basically the Friday that the Committee of the Whole Agenda was published and made public, we were contacted by one of the senior vice presidents at Comcast with suggestions to the ordinance for Title 8. So the fact to say that, I don't think it would be facetious of me to say that the utilities and the communication providers are watching very closely what's happening, not only in this community, but throughout Illinois.
Okay. Is there going to be, I have a couple other questions, please bear with me. Is there going to be tree removal required for any of these or any other physical changes to the right-of-ways for any installations?
Typically, there would not be a tree, I haven't seen instances where there's going to be tree removal. The goal of this is to get the applicants to locate on any existing utility poles in the right-of-way, first of all. That's your first default option, if you will, and only if they can demonstrate that they can't go on an existing utility pole for whatever reason, technical or otherwise. If they can demonstrate that adequately, then their second option is to construct a new pole, again, using the concealment techniques that we've specified.
And are those concealment techniques citywide or only in the historic district?
So those are, those are universal throughout the, throughout your city. We've imposed concealment requirements on any type of small wireless infrastructure pole being constructed.
I wish I had visuals. I wish I had something to look at to say, this is an example from another town, and I want to know exactly what we're dealing with because I'm, I don't want...
And we have different kinds of visuals, but I don't know that we have established what Geneva's concealment would be.
Right.
What the ordinance does is say that we require them to be concealed, so they would have to submit a plan for that concealment for us to consider.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm giving, I'm leaving the power in your hands to decide what is appropriate in terms of concealment techniques, because what's appropriate in the historic district may not be appropriate in a residential environment, for example, or in an industrial environment. So every location has its own individual characteristics, and it is very subjective. And as I said, you know, a palm tree, it works in South Florida, it doesn't work in Alaska. That's the extreme example, but there are gradient everywhere in between, and the option will be for you to decide what is the appropriate concealment technique.
Got it.
I mean, you know, there are...
I understand. Can I move on to another question?
Sure.
I'm really sorry. So is it true that 5G technology requires fiber optic cables, like a network of fiber optic cables? We just had Geneva wired by Metronet.
Yes.
Is that a precursor to this?
Yes, so what's called the...
Is that something that we were, that we discussed, like the Metronet installation, FYI, will now make us 5G ready? Or was that just so, no connection?
It's what's called the backhaul for networks. So, again, you're, take out your phone, your call goes from your phone to the cell tower. It then goes down a wire into a fiber optic network to a switch, kind of like the one over here, routed out some more wires, back up another pole, and transmitted to the handset of the person you're calling. That's how the network works.
There are a number of existing fiber optic networks through the city. Wide Open West, which came through in 2014. Verizon has its own fiber optic network. The city has its own fiber optic network for that matter. The Metronet fiber optic system that's going through is to provide individual point-based wireless technology to the individual home. So it could, it'll be as an alternative provider to Comcast or AT&amp;T, for example.
Okay. I was just kind of curious, because I don't remember hearing anything about 5G technology when we were having the whole Metronet discussion, but then I just started reading that there were, that you couldn't have one without the other.
So, Metronet is effectively the competitor of this technology.
Oh, okay.
Because they're, they're trying to keep you on a wired network, and this industry is trying to get you off the wired network and to be purely wireless, but the hidden story there is that the wireless network still requires some wires, but it's the, it's the back office operation, it's not the retail operation.
Okay. I mean, I have concerns about, you know, I'm jumping ahead here, radiation exposure, the noise from the fans. I guess those outweigh the aesthetics in terms of, I guess, the gravity of this issue, but it doesn't seem like we have any way of getting out of it because the state is imposing upon us, you know, you're going to have this technology installed whether you want it or not, unless, of course, we decided to join some type of lawsuit and sue the state of Illinois, which is a possibility. But I, I guess I don't have any other questions at this time. Thank you for all the information.
Anyone else in the dais? Oh, forgive me. Alderman Clemens.
Thank you, Mayor. I do think, I think we probably, a lot of us would agree that it does stink that this is being imposed on us, and we're being forced to deal with this. I think all the concerns that people are raising are excellent, but I think I'm going to have to support this tonight because I think we're even more vulnerable without it. And I think that the questions about lawsuits are possibly valid. I don't know, it's another discussion, but right now, I think we need this because it gives us what little we can get in terms of control. If we don't do this, it does sound like applications will start to come in. They are watching this, and, you know, it's a lot cheaper to put up something that's not conforming aesthetically than it is to put one in that is nice. And so if I was one of these carriers, I would be trying to get in here if we don't do this, because it'll cost me a lot less money. So I think we need this, and in order to protect ourselves right now, while we're trying to figure out what to do is move forward if there is a big statewide movement to do something or whatnot. Thank you.
Alderman Kilberg, anything you'd like to add, questions?
No, I don't have anything to add.
Anyone else in the dais? Anyone from the audience? Mr. Hunter? Come on up, sir. Mr. Lepore, thank you very much, sir. He may be required to return, who knows? We'll see.
Possible, yes. Thank you.
Welcome.
Do I need to state my name again?
Not at all. We have it as Mr. Hunter.
That's right. 919 Red Wing. Okay, a couple things that I just wanted to say is that I understand that we can't stop the forward progress of things, and what I'm concerned about, though, is that we, we handle it in such a way that it's not just the industry and it's not just the legislation, but it's the people that are going to be affected by these decisions are taken into consideration. And myself, I don't want to live with a cell tower 30 feet from my bedroom window, full stop, period. And there's going to be, I will have an issue if it turns out that I, I do have one, because what this legislation says is that's a distinct possibility. So I'm not trying to stop progress, I'm not trying to, I appreciate the fact that you have to protect the community to make sure that, you know, that the legislation doesn't hurt the community as such as well. And I'm thinking mainly on the terms of a resident here. So having said that, I did a little bit of math, and I'm trying to get, see, I'm trying to get the scope of this down, and I did a little bit of math based on the numbers that I was given. And so the consultant said that the range is roughly an eighth of a mile, 440 feet, between 450 and 500 feet. The other gentleman had mentioned that there's 160 miles of right-of-way within Geneva, roughly. So that turned out to be 844,800 feet. Now, if I divide that by 500, that means that we're talking about roughly 16, almost 1,700 small sites to effectively cover this community with 5G service. Seems like an awful lot to me, because considering what we have now is probably no more than seven cell towers throughout the whole city. So to get that in perspective, 1,600 of these small sites around the city seems excessive. It seems like we could do better from a technological standpoint. The, I'm sorry, I'm on the wrong page here. So I just wanted to say that, and I also wanted to say that, you know, these devices emit a form of man-made radiation, and they should be treated as such. And it might be smaller level than if you were standing in front of the tower, say, on the Campana Building or anywhere else for that matter, where there's a big 100 or 200-foot monopole, but the fact is, it's bringing it closer to the people. People are being exposed. There is a definite subgroup of people who are sensitive to electromagnetic pollution or smog, if you will. And so when we consider that these things emit a form of radiation, they should be treated as such and handled carefully for such a long-term decision to make. And long-term, I mean by 25 years, as I heard him say. So if we're looking at a 25-year contract for 1,600 poles, no wonder the carriers are lining up. No wonder they're drooling and waiting for this stuff to be approved so that they can go through with their plans, because now, once they have control of this pole, they can actually stop you from reserving part of that pole for your own purposes. But I didn't want to get into all that. I just wanted to, once again, you know, respectfully ask you to consider carefully the decision that you're making here, and I appreciate your time. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Hunter. I have one question based on the comment you made for Mr. Lepore. If you two want to share the podium, and the statement by Mr. Hunter was, should a carrier first access that pole, it would preclude me or, quote, "the city" from utilizing that pole for something we would deem appropriate. Is that a fair statement, or is that...
I don't believe, there's language in the state statute regarding reservation of certain areas for electrical, for, if it's on an existing utility pole, there are zones in, on a utility pole, some are for electrical, some are for communications purposes and whatnot. I don't recall exactly what your statute provides for in terms of that. I, obviously, if, particularly with the first net, network coming online in the not-too-distant future, which is going to be an AT&amp;T network anyway, your public safety will be operating from the same infrastructure that the commercial system will be using.
Block safety communications.
Right. And I do have language in here preventing interference with your public safety communications, technical interference, in other words.
And I was referring primarily to the idea of the authority being the city of Geneva reserving a part of a pole that a carrier has equipment on, for any future unknown thing, okay? Whether it's an expansion of your, you know, emergency network or whatever the case is.
In other words, if the... In other words, if the pole's already cluttered, there ain't no more room left.
Well, and they're not going to let you reserve the space that they might want to expand into, so.
And I think there, there might be language in, in the, in SB 1451. It, that language appears in about half of the state bills. I don't remember exactly yours, but it could very well be in yours, that, yes, you, you are precluded from, on a, you can't dibs space that the carrier wants.
Even though it's your utility pole.
Even though it's your utility pole.
Which is much like if we can't dibs right-of-way to cable franchise agreements or...
Yeah.
Of course, now this and, yeah.
It's all in the fire pit.
Well... Alderman Rodecky? Oh, forgive me. Rich, you wanted to amplify something or?
Yeah.
No pun intended.
Our utility poles are, are a little different and the fact that even if a communication provider wants to go on one of our utility poles, the electric utility poles, they are still, when the city still has the right to require a pole attachment agreement. And inside that pole attachment agreement is very clear language about where they can and can't locate. Now, we cannot reserve space inside the communication segment of the utility pole. And if we have an existing utility pole that is getting crowded, we can require the permitter to do what's called make-ready work, which could mean they'd have to replace the pole. So say we have a 33-foot pole...
Okay.
And there's not enough room inside that communication zone for any additional work. And you wanted to put another antenna in there, we could require that future provider to either replace the pole or put an extension on, well, actually, they would put in a taller pole, and then they would be legally responsible, financially responsible for relocating all the utilities to make that space. So while we cannot reserve that space, we have the right within our pole attachment agreements to require that utility to make the pole ready to meet our local standards.
Alderman Rodecky?
Yeah, a quick question for our consult. Is Mr. Hunter's math correct about how many of these units we'll need?
Initially, no. Ultimately, probably close, because the goal is that when you're watching TV at home, you'll be watching that wireless leave from a transmitting device somewhere near your home. You, the whole goal is to get, to wean the United States off of wire and be a wireless network of information. That's why the TV spectrum is being auctioned off to the wireless carriers. That's why the C-band spectrum, which is the satellite downlink spectrum that broadcasters use, the FCC came out with a public notice last week that they're going to auction that off to the wireless carrier. The, the 5G standard is going to be, from what, and I don't pretend to understand what my engineers tell me, but it's a very high frequency for the most part, which means it goes a very short distance with a lot of information. Doesn't go a long distance. It's like AM and FM, but to the extreme. You know, FM's a much higher frequency, so it doesn't go quite as far, but it's got more information, it sounds better than AM. AM goes a lot further, but it doesn't sound as good. 5G is like that on steroids in that it's going to go a very short distance, meaning need for proximity, but it's going to have a big pipe that's going to shove a lot of information through.
Okay, so, but not as, we're not going to have that many in the beginning, but is the build-out of this ultimately is probably in the ballpark?
Yeah.
Okay, great. And I have a question for Mr. Hunter, then we'll move on. We only vote one way, yes or no today. We, we don't get a fractional vote, we don't get a lot more to bait. Now, based upon your position, if you're sitting here, do you think it's responsible to vote no right now?
Well, I would, and I'm not asking you to vote no. I'm, I'm asking you to take your time and see where the legislation, where these challenges to the legislation goes. And, and I think that, because one of the, one of the things that I have a problem with about this technology is that, what if I chose to be a fiber optic consumer rather than a wireless consumer? Regardless of my choice, I have to be subject to having a transmission facility on my parkway in front of my house or near, very near my house, and I have no choice in the matter, even though I'm not even supporting that industry. And I think that the future is going to be in fiber and other high-capacity data transmission and not so much in this. But I just wanted to close off to say, once again, that, you know, this is, this is, these devices emit radiation and whether it's a little bit or a lot, and I just wanted to clarify what he was saying, by, there's no comparison to a radio signal. This is in high microwave range, okay? In some cases, 30 gigahertz, okay? Microm, microwaves, very small microwaves. And so, you know, this kind of technology is just not something that I want to live near and, and not have a, a free space in the community where I live that is free of such things. And if this thing goes through and the 1,600 poles do eventually gets installed within five years or whatever it may be, I'm probably not going to stick around for it. So, thank you.
Alderman Maladra?
That, that statement there, if this thing goes through, this ordinance is not going to enable those towers. It's the state act that enables those towers. So, and there's nothing we can do with an ordinance today or anytime soon that says you cannot put these towers up. The state has enabled it, not the city of Geneva. What this ordinance does is enable, it enables us to maintain what little control we can have over this coming technology, which the state, like 20 other states, has decided to basically railroad in. So I want to be very clear about that. If we pass this tonight, it's not us raising a red flag or a yellow flag or a green flag and saying, "Come on, come to Geneva, the door's open." This is the, it's what the state has done, basically, to enable these 5G technologies to take off.
It, it's the law of the land and it's been the law of the land since June 1st, 2018.
Okay, so you said it more eloquently than I did. Nice going, Rich.
I stole that from someone.
Alderman Clemens?
Just real quick, and this is just a question, I think for you, maybe you can answer this, just to maybe help put some people's minds at ease about the frequency of this technology. What is the typical frequency of a Wi-Fi router at a home?
Oh, so Wi-Fi uses unlicensed spectrum. I think it's, it's either one of two possibilities. I think the 2.8 gig range and then there's another spectrum up in the 4, 5.3 megahertz range, somewhere in there.
Megahertz?
No, gigahertz. There's two bands of unlicensed spectrum, again, high spectrum, short distance that they use that the FCC doesn't, doesn't require you to have a license for. Those are the, the, the Wi-Fi A, B, C, D, and G standards. I don't know the exact spectrum. If my engineer was here, he'd be able to rattle them off immediately, but those are all similar, lower-powered, but kind of the same area of the spectrum in terms of frequency of the, the stuff that the wireless companies are using.
Thank you.
Anyone else before we take a vote on item 11B as in boy? We do have a motion on the floor, we do have a second. Mr. Clerk, whenever you're ready, sir.
Mike Bruno?
Aye.
Chair Burkhardt?
This is a vote of anger and frustration, nay.
Michael Clemens?
Aye.
Becky Ruby?
Aye.
Dean Kilburg?
Aye.
That was an aye?
Yes, sir.
Craig Maladra?
I also am angry and frustrated, but I vote aye.
Richard Marx?
Aye.
Jean McGowan?
Aye.
Jim Rodecky?
Aye.
Robert Swanson?
Aye.
Item 11B passes with nine affirmative votes and one nay vote, no abstentions. Mr. Laporte, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Mr. Babica, thank you.
Thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen, we are at new business, item 13. Anyone from the audience who's joined us this evening, any new business they'd like to share, questions or comments for the council? Mrs. Roth? I couldn't see your hand, forgive me.
I'm Adeline Roth, and I have a question for the city council.
Yes.
A couple of years ago, the city council passed the landmarking ordinance that houses could be, your properties could be landmarked without an owner's consent. So what I want to ask tonight is how does that work?
So if that were to happen with all of these...
Oh, sorry. That's okay. How does that work with the Fifth Amendment and the Fourteenth Amendment of the US Constitution that says private property shall not be taken for public use without just compensation?
I would like to defer.
Yeah.
I could, we can certainly provide a thumbnail answer. I'd certainly defer to our city attorney, Mr. Radovich, on that. Otherwise, we'd be providing yourself with writing.
I'd have to, quite frankly, research it, but I think it has been determined that it, it, it does not violate that, that principle as a public, for public policy basis.
Okay, but what if you, you have a home or a building with surrounding property and you're going to landmark the house or the building? Can you take the surrounding property?
I, I think we're talking about an abstract situation here, ma'am, and so I, I don't believe it's a, a taking under the, the constitutional provision that you're referring to, that scenario.
So I'm not talking about just landmarking a house. I'm talking about additional property that's perhaps could be developed or is developed and that once landmarking it, they want to take the property too. That would be a taking without the person being compensated, wouldn't it?
Mr. Mayor, I, I think we're dealing with abstract, non-factual bases here and I, I don't think it's appropriate.
I think it's a good question.
I don't think it's appropriate for this forum.
There is a distinction between landmarking a property and taking a property, of course.
For asking, for legal opinion.
No, I'm not asking for official legal opinion. I wanted you to address this as a constitutional issue in generalities, but are you referring to a particular property, Mrs. Roth?
Sure, my own.
Your own. Is, your, your assumption is that the city of Geneva wants to take your property?
No, if they landmark it, they're interested in the property surrounding it too.
Okay, got it.
So I don't have the use of it or the ability to sell it.
Okay. I will, I will state for the record, and I hope that our friends in the media will, and certainly our low-frequency broadcast here on Channel 10 and Channel 99, the city of Geneva is in no way interested in, have plans for, or in pursuit of landmarking your property, period. Period.
Okay, that's good to hear.
Okay. Thank you very much. Anyone else from the dais? Don't shoot the messenger, but I'm going to call for a motion to go into closed session. Motion to go into closed session, ladies and gentlemen, on pending litigation pursuant to five Illinois compiled statutes, 120 slash 2C 11. So moved. Motion by Alderman Marx?
Second.
Second by Alderman Bruno. Roll call vote.
Mike Bruno?
Aye.
Chair Burkhardt?
Aye.
Michael Clemens?
Aye.
Becky Ruby?
Aye.
Dean Kilburg?
Kilburg, aye.
Craig Maladra?
Aye.
Richard Marx?
Aye.
Jean McGowan?
Aye.
Jim Rodecky?
Aye.
Robert Swanson?
Aye.
We will be adjourning brief, or, just for a brief period, there will be action taken upon return. We shall return momentarily. The microphones are off and the cameras will be turned off for a brief time as well. I'd be happy to entertain a motion to return to open session.
So moved.
Alderman Marx makes that motion, seconded by Alderman Ruby. A roll call vote is required. Mr. Clerk, whenever you're ready.
Mike Bruno?
Aye.
Chair Burkhardt?
Aye.
Clemens?
Aye.
Ruby?
Aye.
Kilburg?
Not here.
Maladra?
Aye.
Marx?
Aye.
McGowan?
Aye.
Rodecky?
Aye.
Swanson?
Aye.
We are back in open session, ladies and gentlemen. I turn to Alderman Marx.
I make the motion to move, to authorize a settlement in the amount of 25,000 as full and final settlement of workers' compensation claim for Chad Clark, authorize a settlement of 15,000 as full and final settlement for the workers' compensation claim of James Burton, and authorize a settlement of 32,000 as full and final settlement for the workers' compensation claim of Paul Van Dorn.
There's a motion by Alderman Marx on the settlement claims as stated. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Alderman Rodecky. Questions or comments regarding this matter? Mr. Clerk, please take the vote.
Bruno?
Aye.
Burkhardt?
Aye.
Clemens?
Aye.
Ruby?
Aye.
Maladra?
Aye.
Marx?
Aye.
McGowan?
Aye.
Rodecky?
Aye.
Swanson?
Aye.
Motion passes with nine affirmative votes, no nay votes and one absent. This matter has been resolved. Any last comments before we entertain a motion to adjourn? A motion to adjourn is in order.
So moved.
Alderman Marx makes the motion.
Second.
Alderman Clemens makes the second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? We are adjourned, ladies and gentlemen.